Just a weird tradition.
Just seeing.
Yeah, but it's already out.
Oh.
Unless we're going by the new rules, of course, 2014, we haven't started yet.
I'd like to call the meeting of January eighth, two thousand fourteen, the Class and School Committee to Order. Present, Paul Schubert.
Present, Paul Niuwaini.
Present, Mary McHoldrick.
Present, Gina Steno.
I'd like to ask those who wish to join the special meeting, Mary, if you'd like to join and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up is approval of minutes, ask for a motion to approve the minutes, uh, October second, two thousand thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on October second, two thousand thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. First, I have a couple of questions. The, I had asked about this before and we didn't have any answer yet because we were still waiting on interviews. Can you tell me if the high school special education position has been filled yet?
Yes.
It has, okay, great.
Okay, we wrote in the classroom the other day.
Great, and since Mrs. Demus is here, also noted in the set of minutes was competitive grant, did we ever hear back from her?
Yes, we did.
Did we get it?
Uh, it was a nice thirteen-page document, thanks for submitting, but no offense.
Wow.
And I wrote back and asked if they were reopening, and she said, "I'll let you know."
Okay. All right, and then on page three, I have some comments. Underneath student enrollment at the end, I think that it would be good to capture Mr. Niuwaini's suggestion to do a mailing, to be sent to parents of preschool students, polling their, the parents' intent to send their children to Cohasset Public Schools. I think that was a great suggestion, to send a postcard and just, you know, a postage-paid postcard, and I think it would be nice to capture it in the minutes. There was so much here captured verbatim that it would be nice to have that in here.
Since our preschool is in I-PASS, I will probably be doing it by means of I-PASS, and then I'll probably have the preschool teachers do the outreach to the other preschools,
To the other preschools, right.
because frankly, we don't have the addresses of the parents.
Right.
And it would take us hours to gather them.
But, you know, I think that what you could do probably is create a memo, supply it to the preschools with the attached postcard, and ask them if they could distribute it to their parents, I think it's worth a shot.
Thank you.
Um, also, um, Mrs. Cataldo said the plans for the next five years is to create a plan with the town manager, and I think it should say, Mrs. Cataldo said the plan for the next five years is to work with the town manager on getting more accurate census data. There was, I always struck that wrong. And then on the next page, under clubs and activities, CPAC hired Katie Shamucks to come to train the students and coaches. I think it should be more specific because that's what was said in the meeting, that they would come to train peer leaders and students in clubs and coaches, so they can more easily get all the kids engagement programs in school. Under superintendent's goals, approve the superintendent's goals amended for twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, should be twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. And under monthly update, we have the potential of using twenty thousand dollars. We got the potential of using twenty thousand dollars for just one person if this person doesn't find employment this year.
Thank you.
Under communications, where we discussed the alternative energy committee meeting, the process has stalled for the solar, solar A-Rays, it should be Arrays, A-R-R-A-Y-S. And I believe that SREP credits, the word credits is redundant because I believe that the C stands for credits. So it should be because of the SREP.
Period.
Period. Or you could say SREC program instead of credits. And that's all I have for now. Oh, Garrett Bradley's name is spelled wrong, you might want to fix that. There are two Ts on Garrett. That's the last line before executive session.
So I'd ask for an amendment, please, the original motion for the set of comments and corrections.
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Call a favor for the amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
And the original motion is the minutes, ask for a vote on the minutes approval, on favor?
Aye.
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 Um, next up, um, good news, um, for the superintendent for some money in the pocket.
Yes, so tonight, we have two of our very giving groups who've come before to talk about some money they'd like to contribute to the district. I know, we're gonna start with the CEF, um, Janine, you folks wanna start? We're most appreciative of what they do constantly.
Um, we would like to present a check for thirteen thousand sixty-nine dollars to fund three different grants that were submitted to us in the last round of grant applications. The first is seven thousand five hundred dollars for articulating the college process for families, written by Carolyn, going to the high school to support things like the development of a handbook, a couple of panels for families and parents of the high school students getting into the, the college process, really the better understanding and earlier state what it's all about, what it entails, giving them the step-by-step sort of guidelines for enabling that process a little bit. Will be the first, should we just go through all three? Second, three thousand three hundred fifty dollars to fund at Deer Hill School facilitating learning through technology for children with disabilities. So it's a pilot program using iPads to support special education, starting at the fifth grade, seeing the success and impact, and potentially rolling out to other grades. And then the third, two thousand two hundred nineteen dollars, which is fifty percent of the Osford School three-season greenhouse submitted by, by, by the count. Um, and that will likely be co-funded fifty percent by the PSO. If they vote on that tomorrow, if for whatever reason the vote doesn't go through, we will fund the remainder of that as well. But for now, we are at the two thousand two.
Question?
Go ahead, yeah.
Who wrote the grant for the Deer Hill?
The whole group. Carrie Coley, Danielle Kent, Trish Baldwin, Lisa LaRosi, and Jen.
Do we have a list of these? Were they in your folder? I only saw the piece.
No, no, they, they called me, uh, do you need anything on this?
No. Yeah. Okay, okay, yeah.
So I was not able to make the, the big board, sorry, but thank you.
Thank you, we're very grateful that you want to continue to support the district the way you do.
So I'd ask for a motion to accept the check for during that exact time.
I'll make a motion to accept the very generous gift of the CEF in the amount of thirteen thousand sixty-nine dollars.
A second?
Oh, on favor?
I'm Mary McHoldrick.
I'm Paul Niuwaini.
I'm Paul Schubert.
I'm Gina Steno.
I'm Holly.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, that's very generous and put a lot of work in it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, the second gift item that was in your folder was from the PSO, and we're given a list of items from teachers, and the total grant allotted was ten thousand six hundred two dollars and seventy-four cents. There were some monies already that had been paid toward Circus, with the balance to be given to the school for nine thousand thirty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Jenny Malinowski had planned to come to the meeting tonight, but quite late, she discovered today she was not able to be there, and so I shall just read that, "I cannot attend tonight's meeting, but I'm hoping we can say the following on behalf when the PSO grants are accepted, the PSO has funded teacher grants since nineteen eighty-six, and we're proud to do so again this year. We're happy to fulfill teacher requests on items that enrich the lives of our students and maximize our students' educational experiences. Many thanks, Jenny Malinowski." So it will need to be accepted by the committee, and it is in total of ten thousand six hundred two dollars and seventy-four cents.
I make a motion to accept the PSO grants for, uh, the total of ten thousand six hundred two dollars and seventy-four cents.
A second?
On favor?
I'm Mary McHoldrick.
I'm Paul Niuwaini.
I'm Paul Schubert.
I'm Gina Steno.
And one thousand five hundred sixty-seven is already been paid, yep.
I want to thank them, that's, again, it's a lot of work they're raising.
A lot of work between the two organizations, we could not do this without them.
Sort of things that don't show up really on the bottom line of the budget helps a lot of the curriculum.
Okay, the second thing on the list is the transportation letters. We asked Mrs. Dixon to come and address this. We have been talking for the last couple of years, and particularly this year now. This fall would be the large subscription for the buses. We're trying to find ways to make sure that the monies come in well enough in advance so that Mrs. Dixon does not spend the last week of August here twenty-four hours a day, which she basically does, trying to get it organized, but those last, that last week or two in August and into the first week or two in September, folks are still running in, trying to pay checks, sometimes they come in in October, and we feel that not having, uh, stable numbers has really led to the, a problem in trying to make predictions of what we need. And so, we work together, and Mrs. Dixon has come up with two letters that she's presented, and I, there might be some questions from the committee that you'd like to ask of her, but one of the things that we had addressed was the idea, the concept, and we hope you will accept this, that we have our fee set, but if folks do not pay on time, that there is a small fee attached for late subscribers. It's different if somebody moves into the town after these deadlines, but for folks who are living here, who use the bus regularly, we're really thinking of those folks who frequently will be coming in six weeks into the school year to give us a check.
Um, is that in addition to what you're doing here? It seems like you will work people who, uh, pay early, so there's gonna be a fee after July fifteenth?
Mm-hmm, and actually that fee.
That, that's not mentioned here.
Uh, it's after June fifteenth.
I mean after June fifteenth.
It's, well, it says here if you are a dri, a rider who pays, there is a fee, and it says on the letter, by the way, it was Mrs. Dixon.
Okay.
Also talk about it.
Okay, what, um, what the intention is, is that if you pay on time, the fee remains the same as it has for the last seven years.
Okay.
Hundred and eighty dollars, if it's after that.
May fifteenth.
Right.
Correct.
That's received by May fifteenth.
Right, right. So it's, can be perceived as a discount, or, you know, a, uh, discount if you pay.
Yeah, it used to be like July, now it's June. It used to be August.
We've, we've found, it was, it was August, it was July fifteenth at one point.
August.
That was August, it was. Yes, it was August and July.
We agree that, it was August first, that's been exchanged.
Right, it's changed around.
And the majority of excuses that I received for the almost five hundred students that were signed up after the deadline was we were away this summer.
Right, right. So after June fifteenth, they're paying two hundred per student or a family, kept it six hundred.
Yes.
And after June fifteenth, that, I mean, uh, before June, yeah, right, uh, uh, between May fifteenth and June fifteenth, it goes up to two hundred. And after June fifteenth, they still, they pay the two hundred, uh, per student, uh, and, but they're gonna be on the waitlist. Is there a, another additional fee after June fifteenth?
No.
Okay, see, that's the way you said it, I was confused.
Okay, and I'm sorry.
So what, I see it as a reward, not a punishment.
Right.
I think in terms of human behavior, it's always better to view it as a reward. So kind of if they do it, uh, by May fifteenth, they're rewarded for a hundred and eighty, doesn't go up.
Yes, and, and just so you know, as parents were coming in, in the spring and the summer to pay, I did ask if we made it in the spring, would that be better than the summer? And I was, I, for most of the parents that came through, I don't have an exact number, but most of the parents that came through, for all but I think a handful, they all agreed they'd rather do it in the spring, have it out of the way, and go off in the summer, not think about it.
Right.
This does not apply to the students that we are mandated to transport.
Totally, of course.
Kind of ran through six over two, two weeks.
That would be illegal. Right. I really object to expecting people to pay before the school year is over, for the following school year, and, and then penalizing them if they don't do so. I really think that it, it is a punishment, because I, I really believe that there are a lot of things that happen here over the summer, and expecting people to pay by May fifteenth, I, I really, I don't agree with that. I don't have a problem with the late fee.
Right.
At all. I think that if you don't pay your bus fee by August fifteenth, then you get assessed that twenty dollars as long as.
But the, the problem we're experiencing, if I can speak, is the fact that, and now I've done two summers, we're going to our third summer, really what we have found is that most people don't have their mail over the summer, so they wouldn't get it till September, and it makes it very difficult for Mrs. Dixon to make assignments. She was running home at night and reassigning buses and reassigning buses, and really duplicating her efforts.
But with all the respect.
This year, we actually added a bus across the, across the district that you were.
Right, wasn't that the, one of the problems, at the beginning of the year, there was an extra bus added?
Because of.
Because of that problem?
Numbers that came in.
Yes.
Yes.
But I believe that if you, if you inform people by May fifteenth that this is happening for this next school year, then they would be aware because they haven't left on vacation, and maybe some people would opt to pay it upfront. But I really, I really do think it's, it's punishing to expect people to pay their bus fee for the following school year before the school year had sent it.
Just, just for information's sake, Citulat does do this?
Many districts.
Citulat does, we went past for years. We're best at this before school.
It sounds like, you know, while I, 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 I hear you, I appreciate what you're saying, but we need to address the concern, and unless we can brainstorm up a better way to do it, I mean, maybe, maybe the dates need to be tweaked a little bit, maybe it, uh, it should be, uh, you know, do June fifteenth and then July fifteenth, and eliminate the May date.
Yeah, I think May is too early.
Okay, but would that meet your needs if, if instead the transportation fee needed to be received by June fifteenth?
Correct, yes.
That would be okay?
If, if the final, the problem is that once school breaks, we don't see our families again till August.
Right.
And that's where the glitch has been.
That makes sense, well, and the June, you know.
That's why we chose May fifteenth, because the timing, the end of the year.
Uh, question, well, statement. Most people don't go away until before Labor Day, so if, I mean, uh, uh, fourth of July.
Uh, fourth of July, rather.
So you could do, May fifteenth becomes June fifteenth, and June fifteenth becomes June thirtieth, or something like that.
We found last year a lot of people did, though, they were pulling their children out before the end of the year.
Well, that's because we ended it.
because we went so late, it, that last week after the, the June, when we were supposed to end, I mean, that week we had to extend, kids were already missing and had gone to camp the previous weekend, because camps had opened, so.
But it would address, it would address, uh, Mrs. Estino's concern.
I mean, that could happen again this year as well.
What if you just did a June one or June thirty? I mean, everyone's still kind of in the, in my, I think people are accustomed to prepaying, whether it's for the community center or kindergarten tuition, or they're in the mindset, a little bit of that.
Or cool even.
Then maybe if you did June one?
I, I would recommend maybe if we change, it's June one, June twenty-first, before we leave the school
They leave.
and before school's over.
so that we have a chance to remind parents. Because once school closes, we have a very hard time getting ahold of parents. Many districts start doing their bus collections in March and April, and shut it off in May.
My concern with June fifteenth is that we all know how busy it is near the end of the school year. It's so chaotic, it might as well be the holidays. I think, once you get to June fifteenth, you, you get lost in the shuffle tempo.
And I think that's a good idea, but I would word it as like a bonus. For those who get it in by June fifteenth, you get the bonus of having the old rate, which is one eighty. If you don't, you get the, the new rate, which is two hundred. That's what I would do, I mean, it's only a twenty-dollar differential. Not twenty dollars is twenty dollars, but it does put in, then it, it addresses some of Mrs. Estino's concern, because then you're not on the waitlist if you pay, uh, you know, like June twenty-first. Put the waitlist on June fifteenth, and school, we know is not gonna probably end on June fifteenth.
The other thing I, the other thing I might suggest is, uh.
Then we are.
There's no way it's getting in June fifteenth.
The, the three dates kind of feel a little, little clunky, to, and I, I'm not a reader, you have to sort of sit there and read it twice. It, what if we, if we just kind of said, there's a June twenty-first and there's a July fifteenth, or whatever the dates are. If you get it in by June twenty-first, it's one eighty. If you get it in by July fifteenth, it's two hundred. After July fifteenth, it's, you're waitlisted.
But if we could do it on June first.
Or whatever your dates are.
I want to get back.
Whatever your dates are, but just two dates, 'cause it raises the question. I know we're kind of microing this letter, but.
That's all we're, okay, that's, that's all we're talking about, is two dates, Paul.
Well, no, the way it reads now, though, there's three, and it's, and you're like, well, what happens between June fifteenth and July fifteen?
Yeah.
You know, so I'm just suggesting we bring it to two dates.
Okay, that's, that's why we could.
I have a suggestion for simplifying the, the date thing. How about if we make it, um, transportation fee received by June fifteenth? And then say, and, and just eliminate dates and say, all payments received after the close of school will be two hundred dollars.
The, the, that, that is a, a good suggestion, except the problem is that parents are not coming back and delivering the money until the day before school opens or two days, and then as a result, Mrs. Dixon had to redo the maps at least four times before we got to school. Then when we discovered we needed another bus, she had to do the maps still again. So what we want to do is have it concluded before school breaks, uh, and that way she can begin to work on it, contact families if they need to.
I know what you just said.
The concern is that if anything after school breaks, we do not see our parents.
No, there's no waitlist, there was no waitlist.
Well, you could still put the waitlist in.
Their third, their third date is for the waitlist, for the people.
It would be anything after June fifteenth would be waitlisted.
I don't, I don't have three days on mine. My date is, it says, no, no, my copy. Do you have the new one? No, did you, we give you a new one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The corrected, no, wonder.
You have a new copy.
It's on your desk.
Oh, yeah.
Nope, I don't have a new copy.
Thank you.
I put it on your desk over there, the new one.
Oh, okay, now I see it.
Okay.
Somebody put it on top of this.
That might help some.
Yes.
Yeah, that helps a lot.
So does every, sir, does everyone have the graph which says May fifteenth, one eighty, June fifteenth, two hundred, and July fifteenth, waitlist?
Yes. I would say the after-June fifteenth waitlist.
No.
So it's after June fifteenth, there's waitlist, yeah.
You got the old one.
Yeah, you have the old one, I gave you the new one.
That's what I had, too, I had the old one.
Which is the new one? The new one has two dates of three.
So does everyone have the June fifteenth?
Okay, this is the old, got it.
So this is the new one.
That's where I was reading, the new, that's where I was, because I thought you said three days, I said, um, ah, either my eyes are failing me.
Me, too.
We, we can reword it, we can reword it to have, you know, the fee for May fifteenth, the fee June fifteenth, and anything received after June fifteenth will be waitlisted.
And just say between Exum.
I thought we're changing June fifteenth or June twenty-first.
Well, it can be, it can be June first and June twenty-first, it can be May fifteenth and June fifteenth, uh, but I.
Or you could say the last day of school.
I'd rather have a concrete date.
Okay.
Because that day's gonna keep switching according to the weather and the way we've had things, and tracking it.
I would, I would also suggest that sending this out on March thirty-first, people are gonna throw it in the bucket and think, this doesn't affect me now. So maybe we wait until the week after April vacation to send it out.
If it's June first, that's fine, I would say that that would be fine, because that's still six weeks.
So, so we're saying that people should.
So after people vacation.
Right, people vacation.
So people should try to get in by June first.
Mm-hmm.
Then you get the, um, uh, the bonus. You get the, uh, discounted rate of, of the old. A wording is very important here.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, you get the new rate if it is on the, uh, the twenty-first, I'm looking up the twenty-first, because that.
Between the second and the twenty-first.
Between the what?
Between June second.
Well, obviously, that.
Well, it's, it's gotta say that, though, 'cause it, otherwise it's not obvious.
Well, yeah, it is, if you get in by June first, you get a hundred and eighty.
Read, read the second bullet, go ahead.
I think if you say after June first.
Exactly, but before June. It's twenty-first.
Well, what, why don't I make a recommendation to the committee now?
Logic dictates that the primary, the first statement assumes that.
Yeah, but it's not clear, so just, let us just clarify, because what if you get it in on, uh, you know, you're, they're both in before June fifteenth, in both scenarios.
Uh-huh, we're getting rid of June fifteenth, we're only working with June first and June twenty-first.
That, well, may I recommend to the committee that we bring this back on the twenty-second, now that you know what our intentions are?
We all have the right to.
We all have the right to.
With a June first and June twenty-first date.
But do not use the date of June twenty-first, it is a Saturday. It makes us look stupid.
June twentieth.
Okay, either the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, I have.
Twenty of springs.
What, the last, Phil, what's the last official day of school?
Right now, it's the nineteenth.
Exactly.
Sorry, I happened to.
Yeah, well, of course you.
There's no way it's gonna be, it's not.
Everybody had nineteen.
Yeah, that's right, so it might have to actually be before we break, is the intention.
I, gee, my recommendation is to write down, uh, the twenty-seventh of June, because this year we were, this past year it was the twenty-sixth of June, this past year, and to tell you the truth, winter is gonna be like, it's already in the farm zone, it's, it's gonna be really bad. I would say June twenty-seventh.
Well, and, and may I ask, and certainly please speak, uh, that I would like to try to solidify the date, so every year the parents will assume, well, it's gonna be first and twentieth, or, versus this year it's the twenty-second, seventh, next year it's the twentieth, the year after that we do the twenty-fourth. I'd rather have the same window each year, so it's predictable to parents.
But once and while that date's gonna fall on a Saturday in Sunday.
Like June first.
I, I'll be honest, mine is, okay.
I mean, June first already falls on Sunday.
Okay, so you don't have to keep.
Kind of like a bargain date, because if it falls on a Saturday, then really anybody who sends it on Saturday will get till Monday.
Okay. Well.
So then June first and June twenty?
Do you want to be tweaked, and then we'll come back for the twenty-second?
Does the twentieth meet your needs, Mrs. Estino?
Yeah.
So first and the twentieth, is that a reasonable?
Yeah, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll have the letter for you on the twenty-second to review and, and I believe, you know, approve.
I, I also did send a letter to the Board of Select and asking about the hooking the fees for the, um, facilities fees to the, um, census, and that went to them, just to see if that would be a reasonable thing for them to approach.
Did they reply back?
Nothing, no.
Good idea.
We'll see.
Is nobody have to go to a meeting and bring it up, you know?
Well, I sent them.
Is that because you want to get a better account of kindergarten?
Yes.
I mean, it's in their packet, they've received it, it's in their hands, it's questionable, execute any decision on it.
Thank you, this is, this is, hopefully helped.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, thank you.
As brutal as that session was.
I mean, this, this may prevent what happened, you know, last year, where we were juggling, we were juggling people at the end of the, at the beginning of the year, which was.
Oh, yeah. I mean, we have found out people signed up today. Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for coming up so late. Well, late for you.
It's late for me.
Late for you. Uh, the next thing on the list is the NEAS letter that was in your packet. I know that Mrs. Conley presented the report just the meeting prior, and this letter came in right afterwards, and so we felt that this would be the time to present the letter. We don't want to go into a lot of detail about the letter tonight, because we're working on a plan, uh, but there were a few comments we wanted to be able to make, and you might have some specific questions for us in between.
I just wanted to hear from our curriculum person, because I thought we were doing fairly well in curriculum department. So, you know, listening to the absence of purposely designed curriculum.
We are not doing fairly well, we are doing phenomenally.
Yeah, so why are they coming, they said that we, we have expressed concern, and we're only on.
I want to say that the day that pen met paper, that was probably a viewpoint. By the time the document was printed, it was totally untrue. We are in a com, incredibly great place with curriculum. Uh, we are online, we're writing curriculum, we have a quota coming in from every department, six, twelve. Uh, I've already told you everything we've done from K five that is going to front-load that. Their concern was that it was not in writing, and I, I think that we need to take, uh, it is in writing, it wasn't updated and reviewed.
Okay.
And there were reasons for that, the new frameworks were not out, Common Core is only two years old. Uh, the national science standards have still not been voted on, so we do not have new science standards that we can use and document. We have stumbling blocks everywhere in building and writing this curriculum. We have, uh, documented and paid for a license to two thousand fifteen for our Atlas Online that covers everything they want, including what the state has asked us to do, and more, including, um, student intervention, use of technology, uh, addressing all learners, essential questions, everything that the NEAS document has asked. It is online, it was not well enough in progress, it was still on paper because the six, twelve staff were ensconced in building this piece of writing.
Okay.
And that's where it came from.
Yeah.
So, uh, Carolyn and I will present later, but we are in an incredibly great place right now.
That's good, and Mr. General, um, is there, uh, I mean, like, uh, an organized process in terms of the facility? They didn't like our paper picking?
So, I can address that, because, yeah, I can address that, and before I even address that, what I did want to let you know, too, is that there are some, um, there's a large discussion among the state superintendents about NEAS, the organization, and the fact that it might not be keeping pace with the common. There's a large discussion among the state superintendents about NEAS, the organization, and the fact that it might not be keeping pace with the Common Core and the new requirements that we are all being asked to meet through the commissioner.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and it just hit this afternoon, I got an email on that very thing, that a good number of towns and cities have pulled out their membership of NEAS. They're no longer participating, not just in this state, but now across the country. And so the superintendents here are trying to meet with NEAS and build some kind of foundation, and they will be building, um, some small consensus group from across the country. A number of superintendents will be on a committee as they try to help realign things. That being said, they came, well, we're in the middle of the Common Core switch. And so in terms of the facilities, I know that there were some questions brought up, in particular, why would an elevator not be inspected up to date, where were the reports and so forth? So Mr. Kelly and I sat down.
And it wasn't on the elevator, remember?
It's not on the, it's now on the elevator.
Oh, I'm sure that's where it was.
When they came, it wasn't, but I talked to.
The whole town probably knew about it.
I talked to Mr. Kelly, and he said, one of the problems is that the only people who ins- inspect the elevators are the state. State is, uh, very much backlogged, and I know that, I said I would call in, I know that Dr. Schubert had a chance to call in, and I think you saw pretty much that very same response. There is a huge backlog, and so as a result, no matter what our efforts are to want them inspected yearly, if the state does not have a person to come out and see our elevators, it won't happen. However, I do want the committee to know that we have several vendors contracted who regularly maintain our elevators. So we don't wait for the inspector to come in eighteen months and say, by the way, you better fix this. Instead, they are being maintained several times a year, the company is coming out, and they are doing maintenance on the elevators to ensure they are safe for everybody. And in between, we have to wait for that inspection, it's not anything that we can jump in line.
That's cool.
But I wanted you to know, because it was a concern, and I think it's fair that you know the process and why it wasn't up to date.
Right. Right.
Now, for the teachers who came who work in the state, I'm surprised they weren't aware. Uh, but I also know that Mr. Kelly offered to share all of the inspections with the person who interviewed him, and the person declined him. So, we have them, uh, Mr. Kelly does have them in his office, we've now made arrangements for how they'll be dispersed, all the individual principals from here on in, no matter whether it's an oil burner, a fire extinguisher, a fire inspection, or anything else, that all of the principals will keep a copy of those inspections in their schools in a file. So that if they ever need them for any reason, they will be there. That was just something that didn't happen, and we recognize it, but we have already corrected that. And then Mr. Kelly talked to me about, uh, the inspection process for things, for instance, the boiler, I think there was mentioned that there was an expired tag on the boiler. He talked about the fact that when they come out, they have to provide a special certificate. The certificate has to come from the state, in order for it to come from the state, which takes about a month to process, before they'll even process it, they need to receive the money from the town. Each sticker is five dollars, so once it's inspected, then Mr. Kelly has to go to town hall, do a P O, get the money sent into the state, then the state has to process it. Then they'll process the sticker, and it will come out, and he says it takes about two months after the inspection before we can even see a sticker recognizing that the oil burners have been, um, have been inspected. And I only tell you all that not because we want to mask anything, we want the committee to realize that we are doing everything in our power to stay up to date, but some of the pieces we can't help.
And you have to realize that, this, this equipment is always maintained, so we're all about that, about that.
Right. Right, but what's confusing to me. Yes, no, what it was confusing to me is they wrote that huge long report, these are people that, most of them who come and do this are from Massachusetts.
Yes.
Right.
Hello, don't they, if I was part of that team, the first thing I would do is say, what are the regs in Massachusetts, how did things get inspected, what is the, the backlog, what's the situation? And then to write a report like this, and say to us, we're, you know, provisional or whatever like that, based upon living in Massachusetts, and that thing takes two, three months,
Yes.
that, you know, somebody's gotta talk to the Department of Education and say, hello.
Well. It's not the Department of Education, Ashley, it's many other mechanisms in the state outside of that.
Right. Yes, but if I was a, a observer, okay, and on a committee, and I have been, you know, at the college, you know, one of the first things I, I've done in the past is look about how the regs are done.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And what is the backlog, and things like that. I just think it, it was irresponsible of the New England Associated Schools and Colleges to write a report, knowing, you know, saying things about the facility and about the delays for stickers when we're in Massachusetts, and it takes two, three months to do that.
Right, so just so the committee knows, our, our chair was from Connecticut, uh, who organized it.
Right, and I, I.
Right. Well, then the chair in Connecticut should find out what's going on in Massachusetts.
Maybe. I will tell you that, uh, when I was interviewed, I got less than ten minutes. Uh, one of the, the only thing I was able to emphasize is the amount of money we had spent on technology and what had happened in this high school, and got them to see the changes that were in process. And yet, we basically looked like we were marked down for not having any technology. It looks like a lot of the responses in here might have been from the self-study, which, when teachers did authentically the self-study several years ago, there were many things that were not in place, and we've been moving at lightning speed. So the committee should also know that I have a call into Janet Ellison, she has not returned my call yet, but I have put a call into her, and I've also, I'm speaking with the executive director, all of the Massachusetts Association of School superintendents, and told them what happened to us, and said that I'm very interested in having a tie to this. Because I felt that everybody in the school, Mrs. Conley's done an awful lot of work in the last eighteen months to make things get better, to improve the situation.
Right.
And yet, it looks like we've made no strides to change how business was done, and we have. And so when Mrs. Dimas says that we are in a great place for curriculum, we certainly are, but we have to wait now another seven years before anybody knows.
Correct. And that's anger, and that, that produces frustration, anger in me, uh, and so therefore I'll have to work for the state of Massachusetts, because it's ridiculous.
No, I, I agree.
But I love.
Yeah, because if you're applying for a grant, and they ask, you know, like, what is the status from the New England Association of Schools, and they read this, you know, um, that's not cool.
Right.
Okay, somebody in California who's on a grant committee is not necessarily gonna know, um, that Massachusetts has a little issue here. So, I, I just think that's, you know, problematic potentially.
Yes, but I did want the committee to know we're doing our homework on our end to understand where they might have come to these conclusions, knowing what we produced as records to indicate we'd already been making changes.
No, I, I.
Yeah. Right. Correct.
You know, I, I called Garrett Bradley's office about the inspection problem.
Correct.
And they said that there's a backlog on inspection, not only, not only, um, the elevators, but other inspections as well.
Oh, I know, I talked to Garrett. Right.
It's mainly a manpower issue, it's a problem. So I'll give a call to the inspector general.
But Janet Ellison and her little, you know, committee here should have known about that, if there are Connecticut people coming to Massachusetts, i- i- you know, and, and these are the things that we've done, it's, there's a, a disconnect.
Well, I'll say there's always room for improvement, no doubt, but many of the things that were noted here, we feel we're, are already in place, and so that's one of the reasons why I do have the call into Mrs. Ellison.
Correct.
To ask her about it, but I don't know if you have some specific questions for Mrs. Conley, who really, she had to head all of this up and make sure everything's organized, along with the two folks from the school that worked on it.
And my recommendation, maybe somebody from the school department or administrator should get on the board of the New England Association of Schools.
I do wanna add, though, however, that if we put data together, and we put that kind of result on assessment, uh, curriculum assessments, and we realize what our standing is on state testing, there's, it, it's, it's not logical.
Right. Correct.
How can we be the first in ELA in grade eight, in seventy-sixth of our hundred students in grade ten?
Correct.
Are advanced in math, and yet our curriculum is not in, in print.
Correct, so the print.
Correct, so is it the print, or is it the instruction, and are we doing what we should be doing in a qualitative way?
Right.
It, it's as if you've taken an exam, and the exam is testing something that isn't what you're looking to test.
Correct.
And so you've got.
It's the matter of the test being printed as opposed to the knowledge that is in Massachusetts.
Right.
One hundred percent. We, we'll recognize for sure that Mr. Kelly could always use more work, you know, more help, and assistance, not more work.
Yeah.
Very upset I said that. He could always use a lot more assistance, he is definitely.
And I took that as a part of the problem too, that he's only has two other assistants besides him, all buildings in town, you know, we have, I think, eleven, twelve buildings.
And, and again, we, absolutely, again, we would welcome more funding for professional development and curriculum and so forth, there's no doubt about it. But some of the things that they recognize as if we've not done, we believe that we can show, you know, we can demonstrate, yes, indeed, things have been happening, yes, indeed, this is going on, but they did not recognize it, and we can't explain it, which is why I have a call in.
I just wanted to make three quick points, um, just regarding the elevators and the technical inspections. We, in our business, we have to do these things too, and, uh, a lot of people are going around looking for problems to have little gotchas. What, what you, all you have to do, of course, is write the check, in our case, maybe in a municipality, you just have to make the call and document that you've made it. And, and they've suggested to us that we put a little index card or a little sticker in with the inspection that says, you know, requested on this date, or check written on this date. Then it shows that at least you've addressed it, in a, in a visible way.
Yep, it's a great idea, sure, I like that idea.
That might help, and that helps us in our, in our business when we have busybody people looking for.
In fact, Mr. Kelly pointed out to me, uh, when he was talking about, for instance, we have to do an asbestos inspection, now we know that that was removed in the renovation, but we continue to have to do it every three years, brought the schools, it's a hundred dollars a school, it's paid in advance, and then we wait.
Right. All right.
Right, and you just document that you, you've satisfied the requirement, and then they can't penalize you.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then the, um, second point is, um, just about professional development. If I recall, don't we have more funds available than have been utilized? Don't we have surpluses, as small as they may be?
Last year.
Last year, okay, so last year, we provided more than adequate funding, for example. So that's just another point.
The tuition reimbursement account has been left over.
Right.
You know, where the, where the teachers were checking courses.
So thus, so we go to follow that we provided adequate annual funding for professional development, in fact, we provided more than was called for in sets. And then, I guess the third point is, um, would we want to do, just to be on record, a formal written rebuttal, or is it not, is that?
That's why I have a call into Mrs. Ellison to ask her, you know, how do we recognize that we're not necessarily in agreement?
Okay.
Not out to anger them, of course, and, and just to recognize the disconnect, one other point was that, the elevator, that Mr. Kelly said for every day that we weren't inspected, we could be fined seventy-five dollars a day, yet we can't get the state in to do it.
Yeah, well, you get your elevations as, as long as you call and write the check.
The elevators would fine us. Yep.
So, would that be really, I think, important to have a formal written rebuttal, regardless of if she says we should or not, I mean, we should have something on file.
There's a call in it.
It kinda just addresses little things and bigger things. Uh, but the good news is, I thought anyway, that most of this was, with the exception of the curriculum, which we've already rebutted, these are all little things that really are important, that they're being done, and they are, but they're not core to the mission, and they are being done. Like, who cares about the elevator, if it's being, if it's being.
Person gets stuck in this.
No, 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 I mean, if it's being, if it's being inspected and maintained properly.
It is being inspected, it is got his point.
But, but it has nothing to do with our core mission, in fact, so they're focused on little things, 'cause that's all they could find.
Right, right.
And to me, that's a good thing, when you have inspectors who need to find something, and so they have to write a report, and all they're finding is little things, it's somewhat actually encouraging, so.
Um, yes, just in terms of the formal, the formal process, the rebuttal will be the special progress report that they've asked for in September.
Okay.
And when the committee was here, we were also required to submit to them a two and five year targeted plan, which identifies, uh, the curriculum as one of our goals that we had already identified as a faculty, it's the number one goal of the school improvement plan, it's certainly part of the district strategic plan overall. They knew that, so, so they knew it going away, and I think that the curriculum assessment being honed in on as areas of concern, um, was the direct result, as the superintendent has said, of the self-study, where the faculty voted itself, voted us, um, limited on curriculum, because we didn't at that time have the same template. We hadn't started using that particular software, we hadn't started to bring everything together, and voted itself deficient in assessment, solely for the reason that, when you are doing the NEAS ratings, it's one of those, you have to meet all of these thresholds and to continue on to the next level. And if you do not have an adopted and well-used school-wide rubric, you cannot be anything but deficient.
Correct.
So, we couldn't have come out of the category, even though we have, we are rife with quality assessments of many, right, so that's just, I think perhaps,
By definition.
when the, when the, um, association looked at all of the ratings that the faculty had voted on, the executive summaries, they were kind of led to a conclusion that we agree is, doesn't feel right. And it didn't feel, you know, and, and doesn't, absolutely does not reflect what's been going on. And I think it is helpful to think about the fact that the self-study was begun in the year two thousand eleven, and it is a little bit frustrating that so much great work has gone on by the teachers, and led by Mrs. Dimas, um, and so I think that that's our, that's our process, since September first, when the special progress report is written, you can imagine it'll be quite a document. That we will be happy to share ahead of time, to make sure that we're all in agreement that it puts us in the best possible light.
And I would make sure if they wanted us to sign this, that we never sign this. If you're not in agreement with something, we shouldn't sign it.
Is anybody asking us to sign?
No.
No, no, sometimes they do, but sometimes they don't.
Just a letter, but we, we did wanna share, and we're not panicked by this, this information, but, and we're, we're a bit disappointed that things weren't recognized. Especially because we've been so excited, and I believe the faculty are quite excited by the many changes that have occurred. Um, I think most are delighted over their laptops and other technology, but it doesn't get recognized here. And that's the important thing, but there's a lot of good work going on in this group, so. Do you folks have any other questions of Mrs. Dimas and of Mrs. Conley?
Just for our audience, it seems to sum it up, there's been a delay, that they evaluated us as if it was two thousand and eleven, and like, you know, it's like Back to the Future here. And we have to, like, have the timeline go up to, for our audience, it is now January, you know, eighth, two thousand fourteen, and they evaluated us as if it was two thousand and eleven. Is that what you're saying, pretty much?
The other thing to remember is if indeed that's where we were in two thousand and eleven, we should applaud where we are now.
Have a respect.
That we had, we were proactive, we recognized that, and we have dealt with it. And we are on a moving train toward really quality written curriculum. So.
We can.
We already, they didn't tell us anything we didn't know, we didn't have a written curriculum for any number of reasons, primarily because we didn't have the Common Core, and we don't have science standards, whatever it is.
Anyway, thank you. Thank you. Okay, the, uh, the next thing on your list, there's a number of, um, the policies, that you have to do a second read, and I was also asked to, uh, remove the piece on the technology fee, which I did do.
Yep.
Now, so now comes the time for the committee to do your second read, have your comments and votes.
Yes, so the technology network access and acceptable use policy. Um, has anyone got any comments on this from anyone?
I read.
No, I mean, as far as, has anyone contributed you from parents or?
I don't think too many people are watching this on TV, you know.
What is?
Well, everybody you could call in if you remember from the last meeting.
It's public documented, you know, last time around, so, I'm just curious.
Seven eight one, four two four, seven six.
I'm just curious whether anyone's got any feedback. So this is the, uh, the, the second read.
Right.
And would you be willing to vote on it tonight, or would you rather go one more time?
I read it, I mean, I'm in it.
Okay.
I'm fine with it, I read it.
Then I'd ask for a motion to approve the technology network access and acceptable use policy, E D C A dash C.
I'll make said, a recommendation, said motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous.
Aye.
And the next one offers the student internet network access and technology during E D C A dash B.
And that's when we pulled away the fee.
And went off the fee. Um, did anyone get any comments on this?
I have a question. Who requested that we remove that?
Mrs. McGolden. We decided at our last meeting that we would take it out in order to approve the policy.
That we were gonna re. To approve the policy, okay, and then.
And then have it be.
We assess it after we.
Okay, right, okay. That's fine.
I make a motion.
Can I make one more question?
Yes, yeah.
I can't recall if it was to go in here or not, but, um, it just was related to, did we ever talk to Rob about putting, uh, taking out the password for people to be able to access the?
That, that would not be part of this.
That wouldn't be part of this, okay.
That, that still is being worked on.
Okay, but he's on that?
He, he knows that we.
We want?
Yeah, sorry.
Thanks.
We just don't have a resolution yet.
Okay.
Just, uh, another comment, from what I gather, a lot of people know our password. It's pretty much like, almost a covert, covert operation here, it was pretty easy to, for a lot of students to ascertain where our password is, that's what some of the students were telling me, but, but whatever, so. But whatever that's worth, we do wanna have some sort of protection of passwords, we have.
But whatever that's worth, we do want to have some sort of protection of passwords we have to remember.
I think the, I think the, my concern was, and what I had heard from others, is people who don't know it and who want to be able to have access in the school. I remember, uh, at the open house, people couldn't find other people and they couldn't communicate because of the, and the signal is blocked in a big building that's brick and masonry. So, the idea is just, it's really a checkbox, so it shouldn't be a lot of thought or effort that goes into, it just is, if as a group, we want that as a policy to have it be an open network or partition within a network, to be open, I think he just needs to do it.
Yeah, I think that the option would be how much bandwidth there is to allow for other users and that's probably the only downside. Honestly, you know, if, if you're gonna use it, if you're using it appropriately, I could care less.
Right.
I mean, it's a matter of, often as you can able to communicate with somebody, if you're here and you want to find your spouse in a different, in a building and saying, you know, what time is it, are we gonna meet up?
Right.
Just to contact, you know, the kid, saying, we're gonna pick you up at three thirty, whatever.
Right. Yeah, great.
Yeah, that's the only thing is whether or not there's enough.
That begs the question though, right, because then that's just simply, then we can't give the password to everybody.
Right, I mean, if it's, if it interferes with the educational process with the.
Then you have to not only get a, you have to restrict who can use it and who can't. Because if, in theory, if everyone had the password, it'd be a, the same problem as if no one has a password.
Right, but I thought, um, that we were being educated to believe that there's a different, uh, there'll be different Wi-Fi networks, potentially one that's pretty much open for.
That's the partition concept.
Yes, exactly. So, once we get that going.
You have a protected network for the administration and you have open network for everyone.
Exactly, so once we, we deal with that and that's built in, I think that will, that will answer your next little concern.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that would.
It's already built in.
But anyway, I read this, my, and mine is the fee, I have no problem with it, so.
Because I think if, if the, if it's a restricted or a dual system, then the one that gets overloaded isn't the one that's being able to be used.
Correct. Correct. So, I make a motion to approve the student inherent network access and technology agreement, as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any unanimous?
This is very good of us. If the, um, technology policy is public, where may we find that?
You'll find it online after the vote's over.
After we vote on it. Oh, they said we would now and none of us knew where it was.
It would have been up yet.
Well, it's, it's public document when it's in our packets and we discuss it at a meeting.
Okay.
Okay? So, then after we voted, it's public and posted on the website. Okay? But nothing's posted on the website until we voted it.
Where on the website would it be?
Maybe the school committee section.
Yeah.
Uh, next one is the home use of laptop computers and other school own technology.
Yeah, I read that. Yeah, makes sense.
Again, the, uh, discussion? Round two, so, anyone to vote on it?
Yeah, it's protected. I make a motion to, uh, uh, approve faculty and administrative use of laptop computers and other school own technology regulations. Is there a second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pardon?
Do we have to change the adopter dates on all these?
Yeah, it will be.
And next one up is the faculty administrative use of laptop computers and other school own technology regulation, E D C A dash B. Any, uh, discussion?
Mr. Farrell.
To approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve faculty administrative use of laptop computers and other school own technology regulations, E D C A dash B. And why do we need this, isn't that embedded in the online?
I think it's particular to the, um.
This is specific against faculty?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, the other one was staff and this is faculty. Uh, so the other one is, is any school-owned technology, so if a student is using school-owned technology and doing something inappropriate, that's a problem. Faculty administrators need to live on that and this is home use.
Special, special thanks to our fearless policy committee.
That's right.
That was a lot of work for the policy committee.
Yes, that's what I said, the first one is staff, this is faculty. When we just voted, it's faculty.
And next up is the Warren, uh, fourteen dash twelve Sierra.
I make a motion to approve Warren fourteen and one two S.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Hi, Gina Stino.
Hi, Holly Lee.
I call Stevens.
Hi, Holly Penny.
Hi, Derek Mulcher.
I call Stevens. And next up is the Montiel.
Uh, you have, you're, you're on campus, it's an updated financial report. As of, um, twelve thirty-one, we've spent fifty-two point one percent. I, um, yeah, at our last meeting, Mrs. Estino was asking about our unemployment line. I, so I went back to, to look at that and analyze, you know, where we'd be at the end of the year. I think we're, we're gonna be okay. We're probably gonna expend about fifty-one thousand one twenty-seven and our budget is at fifty. Um, if, there is one person, if that person ever came back on during this year, um, then we would be in more trouble, we'd be probably spending sixty-five thousand, so.
Is he unemployed?
Unemployed, yes, yeah, yeah. Mrs. Estino had a question on that last time. But I think, I think we'll be okay, we'll just be a little over budget by a thousand dollars or so. And then if you just turn to the last page for where the grants are listed, a, a lot of that funding has already come in, but if this report was printed before, the funding is here, so that, all, all the negative balances are really covered. So, we're all, so, we're really okay with, uh, the agreements too.
Now, I, I was spoken to some of the, um, board of selectmen, it's worried that the unemployment has always been kind of a bar on the, under the saddle for me, because I, I don't see any other districts, aside from the, the districts that are regionalized, that have that as an operating portion of their budget. Um, I'm not certain there's, um, consensus on the board of selection to accept it back under the town purview. So, I think from now, I'll wait and push for it and see what the new election will bring to see if they're willing to discuss bringing the unemployment line back to the town. Because that's one, it's along the lines of, you know, of, 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 of costs that can easily change from year to year. Oftentimes with economic, you know, problems or just it happens to be a, a few people that leave and that's, it tends to make the budget a little more difficult.
Well, it's tough to track if you don't know, you know, we, we're never notified when somebody gets a job or leaves a job again and sometimes we're caught, even after they leave us, they've had a job and then not, you know, not working after that, we get caught, they go back like a number of quarters, so. You don't always know if, if somebody's gonna come back on to your, to your unemployment list. It's a tough one to track.
I do have a couple of questions on a couple of areas, equipment purchase and lease, what was it they pushed us to a hundred forty-two percent?
Do you want to page one?
Page four.
Fifty-five.
On your dear old school.
Okay.
My fifty-five.
That is because, um, we, we now lease our coffee machines instead of owning them.
Oh, okay.
So, we used to charge the maintenance of equipment account before, so if you look at the maintenance equipment account.
It's lower.
It hasn't even been touched, at, at Deer Hill, it's, it's number sixty-four.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because we're charging everything to lease now, because we're leasing the coffee machines.
That explains that.
So, I, you know, I could go back and make a transfer, a budget transfer.
Yeah, okay, yes.
That's the reason for that.
And one additional question, since our habits are different. Under district-wide technology, supplies, materials and other expenses were at a hundred thirty-six percent, a hundred thirty-six percent, six percent. And we have five months left, so there are going to be printer cartridges and toner cartridges and a lot of other expenses.
If you look at his overall, his overall budget, he still has, he still has fifty-two thousand remaining.
Yeah.
Um, that, that salary support staff, we won't use most of that at all. We, we're using that for the two students from the VOTAC.
Yeah.
That come in and they pay at, at an hourly rate. So, really, most of that will be available for, for Ron, for Ron, for things like that.
I'll be interested to watch that for the next budget cycle because I've asked repeatedly for information on the plan and don't have anything, so. I'm just curious, if we didn't have that salary item in there to help with that, where would we be? So, it'll be interesting to see what the projection is for next year.
But Mr. Fennell came and he gave his plan in that PowerPoint presentation as to where he is and where he's going and what he's done in the district and what he'll continue to do.
Oh, no, he and I have, have spoken about what's been accomplished and he's done remarkable things. I'm just, I, I don't like seeing a hundred thirty-six percent, that's all.
I mean, the other thing with the, um, the budget that was done by the last, uh, town manager, there is a salary that's under the, um, town, uh, the government act.
Right, there's an assistant salary, isn't it? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, Dave, how, how does the maintenance of building grounds work again? Uh, didn't that switch to where, uh, the town is now doing?
It, it is, yes. You know, once in a while, we have to repair telephones or clocks or, or things like that, but.
It's working. Yes, it is. Wow, this is new. It's worked for months.
So, we, we've in the past have picked up those expenses.
Okay.
For, for them, yeah.
But now all, all the clearing of the parking lots and so on, that's all town.
Yeah, right, except for, um, our custom, our custodians clear the walkways and we pay for that piece.
Okay.
But Mr. Kelly's been plowing.
The plows, yeah, yeah.
With his.
Well, not his own personal truck.
Oh, it's a town.
The town truck, but he's still plowing.
Okay.
But that's, that's paid for by the town, by the town side, yeah.
Great.
Can we, um, maybe set up a meeting or, you know, some way to, to talk with maybe Brian Joyce and Mark about the heating problems that are in this building? I am continually getting contacted.
We're continually having problems with cold weather.
Cold is so good and the machines are old.
The kids are sitting in classrooms with gloves on, I mean, that's just, that's.
Very cold today.
Yeah. It is.
I mean, I think a lot of it is the equipment is aging out and, and the design of the equipment, a lot of the units are up on the roof and the, the guys are up there constantly resetting.
I understand that.
You know, yeah.
I absolutely understand that, but we also have to impress upon, again, the town that they took the maintenance away from us. We have been paying money for maintenance out of our own budget for years. I mean, the whole time I've been on the school committee, at the end of the year, we take care of things.
When we have funding available, we try to take care of things that we can do, yeah.
But, you know, something's gotta give on this heating problem in this building.
Well, Mr. Kelly said that, um, on, let's see, I was here Friday, I tried to be a Friday, I was here Saturday. He said on Friday, he was up, I believe, three times on the roof during the storm, trying to trigger the heat. Then he was back up Saturday, he was on his second trip up on Saturday. So, the machines are old, that is the reality there.
So, what, what are we having capital expenditures? Do we have in, you know, um, do we have some?
In requests?
Yes.
We haven't, we haven't even met yet because.
The heating has a, the heating isn't on the list, that's not on the list for this company here, I think it's for the following year.
Okay.
That's not the way it was set up, Mr. Milonowski did a ten-year plan, so.
That's one more question, sorry, the, just, um, I'm just can't remember also with the, the salaries.
Yeah.
They, I would have thought they were all, you know, in the, you know, fifty percent range, just for a splash, because we're six months into the fiscal year. But they're all at like thirty-ish.
Well, because they, the, the.
Because the summer pay.
The summer pay, the teachers get paid from the summer, yeah.
Okay, and then also.
So, it takes a while to catch up.
And then, and then furthermore, they're all.
They don't get, they don't start getting paid till September, so you, you know, you're not paying anybody till July and August when this budget starts, except the administrative.
That's what I figured, okay.
So, the teachers get started in September, but then, and, and, and then in June.
And that's why the administrative clerical, is it forty-five percent?
Is, uh, right, yes, yeah.
And a good way to think about it is the, um, the last Monday of January is the ninetieth day or ninety-first day of the year, so if you think about, we're really, we have reached halfway to the year.
That's good, but it's a hundred and, uh, something of the fiscal.
Right, at a hundred and eighty days, we've not made it halfway yet, so we're really in the right area.
Got it. That's correct, thanks.
Okay, any other discussions?
Yeah, no.
Next, we have our, this is your fifteen.
Yeah, the most interesting part was the assumptions.
And we'll talk about them. So, tonight, we're all gonna, we're planning to review just our preliminary numbers for FY fifteen. Um, we're all having a chat at what we, what we're just gonna show. How's the overview, sorry? I actually thought I'd go, take this out of order a little bit and go directly to this p, page here because this shows the bottom line of what we're proposing at this time. And it also shows the, the amounts previous, previous years of what we, um, had been appropriating. So, for FY fifteen preliminary number, um, is seventeen million forty-one thousand eight ninety-four or a four-point-nine-six percent increase over FY fourteen and that equates to about eight hundred four thousand dollar increase. And as you can see, that's quite a bit larger than we've had in the past. In FY eleven, we had a four-point-six percent increase, but we're asking for, for, for more. And we'll go through some of the reasons why as we go back. So, I'm gonna go back again to the assumptions on page, page two of the, of your handout. So, you know, as we build the budget, we do make some assumptions. So, we, we assume that, um, we have to abide by some contractual obligations like union contracts and, um, fixed costs and so forth and, you know, we have put in assumptions that we need new positions and so forth. So, that's, that's part of what we assume, we're not assuming a level-funded budget because we have these obligations that we, we have to consider. So, it does include contractual salary increases for our teachers, ESPs, custodial unions and administrations, administrators. Uh, we'll be in year three next year, most of those contracts, so we'll start negotiating again. How fun is that? Um, again, we're, we're asking for four-point-nine percent increase over FY fourteen or eight hundred four thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars, um, over the FY fourteen. And most of that increase is, is from, which we'll talk about now, um, like the next, the next bullet item is we have added back our required half-day kindergarten teacher salaries that we took out of the budget out of, for FY fourteen. So, there's half of five teacher salaries put back in there. And that, that comes to about two thousand, two hundred four thousand dollars, two thou, two hundred four eight thirteen fifty. So, that's part of that eight hundred four thousand dollar increase, if they can see.
How much did you say that was?
Two hundred four eight thirteen. And I know, um, by looking at the numbers about, just on salary increases alone overall, that, that's about four hundred thirty-something thousand dollars, um, approximately. And I know, I don't, if you recall, we, when we did this before, we had some concerns about the increases that we were gonna need for next year and, and most of that was the four hundred thousand dollars for, for salary increases alone. So, we, um, we put, we, or put in those salaries back in, the half-day kindergarten salaries and we also are assuming one less position in full-day kindergarten. So, instead of six positions, we are assuming we're gonna need just five positions. We don't really know the counts yet, we haven't heard, you know, from the census or, uh, preschool. Uh, we're, we're waiting to hear preschools and so forth. And I think, um, sign up, kindergarten registration begins January twenty-eighth, so it may take us a while to really know with that kindergarten on the twenty-eighth.
This is the position we just added, right?
Right, correct.
And now we're gonna take it away.
Yep.
Now we're gonna take it away, yeah.
But we have no insight into the. But we have no insight into the population?
No, no.
Where, where?
So if I, well, when we discussed this, we thought if we needed the position back in, we would have to fund it fully by kindergarten tuition.
Okay.
Unless we were able to put half that salary back into the budget, but we just don't know if we're able to do that right now.
Okay.
Can I just ask for Paul's benefit that?
Yeah.
That's the beauty of having that tuition fund, is that if you had something that is catastrophic, you know, like a huge surge, then you can cover it.
Right.
But the kindergarten salaries should not e- ever have really been funded. It, it's public school. They shouldn't be funded by, completely by the, the tuition.
Right.
Right, I mean, the, the half-day.
Because we're required to offer half-day.
Right, half-day should be in the budget, should be.
Right.
Right.
Well, that's Adrian's point.
A point.
The, the tuition is really for the other half, Dave, the other half of the day, right.
Right. We did that, right, we did not help ba- balance our budget last year.
That's why we did it, yes.
Right, it was a phony balance.
Well, I mean, you can look at it that way. It was, it was to help us balance last year's budget, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, but it gave us an, it, it just came by. It gave us an edge so that we were able to do what we need to do.
Now it's coming back and it's sort of a little more, I think, because it wasn't in there to begin with, but.
To bite us. Yeah, yeah. Correct, right.
Okay.
You know, we did what we had to do at the time.
Right, and when we present our budget and we state those facts, people need to understand that we did that because we had to.
Right.
We had no other option last year.
Right, right.
But I mean, if you take the two hundred seventy-two thousand dollars that we had to cut and add it to last year's number.
Yeah.
You know, that's. It, it does not much of an increase.
Well, there's less of an increase.
It's not as much of an, it's not as much of an increase as it looks. It's not, you know, we, we would have probably been, yeah, exactly. So you, you'd be, you'd be, it's a four point five. It's a hundred forty-two thousand, nine, it's a four point five.
Yeah, yeah. Right, it wouldn't look like there was such a drastic increase that we're asking for now.
Exactly. We'd be at four point five instead of close to five percent.
And I'm sure that's something that the committee will have to help the advisory committee to understand if they have any questions as to why it looks like we're having a dramatic increase, when in reality, we're just sort of making a market adjustment to stay within the law.
Yeah. Right, and I stated several times that we have never been asked to take that much money out of our budget before, ever. I think the year before it was like sixteen thousand dollars or something that we had to cut.
Usually we're, usually we're pretty close. We've been, in the past, we've been close.
One year, I think, one year that I was on the committee, it might have been forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, I think there was a couple of years where we, well, maybe there was one year we had, we pre-purchased, um, out-of-district special ed tuition so that we could reduce the next year's budget by a hundred thousand, I think, that was, that was a long time thing too, that we did.
Right, right.
Which we knew we could do it at that time.
Right.
Um, this budget also assumes one less position in grade three, because we are projecting a decrease in student enrollment in that grade. You know, we'll, we'll see that in the next couple of slides, what that, what those numbers look like. The other thing where, where, we're thinking of a possible change here is, um, we haven't included salaries for the two special teams, special ed team chair positions in anticipation of possibly changing to a special needs coordinator and a part-time secretary. And so that we can meet increased enrollment and demand for services of an additional adjustment counselor position for grades, uh, six through twelve. So that's an assumption that we've made here. We've made that, that change in this, this early budget.
But I'll comment and say that we are really a critical mass in terms of between the middle school and the high school, we've exceeded seven hundred students and we have just one person to help all of the students in the school. And there are days that there's a line out the door and it's, it's not fair to the students and it's certainly not fair to the adjustment counselor, who's a wonderful adjustment counselor, but nonetheless, it's not fair.
One adjustment counselor for seven grades?
Seven hundred people, one, one adjustment counselor, counselor covering grades six through twelve.
Yeah, that's crazy.
We need a second counselor in the school.
And who is that?
Hmm?
Who is that?
Well, this is Emily's position, it's being filled in with long-term sub this year.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about Kate.
No, that's a different position.
And she's only middle school, so I just, I didn't, I didn't understand what you were saying.
Uh, are we contracting for, um, a psychologist to be some of our needs in case of emergencies? I mean, adjustment counselor, obviously.
We do, we have some, we've, are contracting to someone to add, and we've already started, uh, ten hours a week, yeah.
We're, how much are, how much are we paying that person per hour? I have to look, I don't remember how much she said.
Come on, I think it's, it's a good number, so it's, it's okay.
Because hopefully we're not paying a hundred dollars a month.
Oh, gosh, no, it's, it's wrong.
No, I think it's a, uh, we did a bunch of, uh.
We did, uh, in the previous administration.
Yeah, no, 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 nothing like that.
And that was ridiculous, because psychologists don't get that.
No, I'm, you know, I'm not sure, but I think it's about sixty, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's much lower.
Because the previous administration was paying a hundred dollars an hour.
No, that's not the case.
Yeah.
No, it's not a psychologist.
Well, that's one.
We have a social worker.
She was a social worker.
This is social worker.
No offense, I'm way too expensive for the high school.
Oh, very, very talented.
You don't need to have a psychologist to do adjustment counseling. A social worker or a master's level school psychologist is, is fine, but.
But we have somebody very talented coming in to assist right now. We're very grateful.
Yeah, that's good, at the master's level.
Oh, definitely, yes.
Yes, right, thank you. But still, sixty dollars an hour is a whole lot more than if we had a half-time position, if we're beginning to use that person a lot. You're gonna be going in the hole. It's like a Band-Aid approach.
Well, we're only using them ten hours a week, that's a difference. So we could really use, I think it's only fair to the school, to the community, to the students, to the faculty, to everyone.
Yeah, but that's six hundred dollars.
If we're really putting the students first, as I believe that is our obligation, we really need to have a second person at the six to twelve level next year, no doubt.
Right. Right. But they're six hundred dollars a week.
Um, the next assumption is, uh, we, we are adding one additional position for middle school foreign language. Uh, that was, that's due to the projected increase in middle school.
Just one question, how much are we paying the present adjustment counselor? It's a full-time person.
Yeah.
That I do not remember the salary.
Roughly fifty.
No, maybe more than that. I'm, I'm not sure, we'd have to work that out.
It's a standard, they're in the teacher's contract, a long-term sub.
It's directly filed with the teacher's contract, so they're, you know, whatever's stuck is called in the rap.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we're probably paying at least fifty or sixty thousand, so you're paying twenty-five thousand for only ten hours.
She, she's only just begun.
Right. Correct.
So it will be, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's not a cost-effective way to do it, so, so, I mean, it just ma- it, it makes it so important for people listening that we get another person, because.
Yeah.
Correct, oh, I, it's very important. Right now it's coming out contracted to this one.
Because basically you're paying a third of the salary and you're only getting ten hours a week.
Ten hours a week.
Okay, because you're, you're not paying more than seventy-five thousand dollars or seventy thousand for adjustment counselor, so you're probably paying like sixty, so it's not even, yeah. You're, you're basically way overpaying by doing it this way.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm advocating we need another person. I, I, I'm, we're even about that.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, but people need to know that because of the fact you're paying so much for a, the Band-Aid approach now.
Um, another position that would be new is a point five, additional position for the high school, that would be in foreign language also. Uh, that's due to enrollment needs and an approximate cost of about twenty-eight thousand, three twenty-five. We're also assuming circuit breaker will help us defray special ed out-of-district tuition costs as we use it as an offset each year. We are expecting five hundred five, uh, two hundred sixty-three dollars to be used as that offset. That's money that comes in this year that we offset next year's tuition. So that way we know exactly how much we're getting there.
And that may go up this year from what I've spoken to everybody else.
The, the re- the reimbursement's up there now, I think it's at seventy-one percent. That's why you see a big increase.
Seventy, it was, it was supposed to go to seventy-five percent now.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I won't see what the budget shows at, at the state level.
Right.
So the five oh five, two sixty-three is at seventy-one?
Yeah, I believe it's about seventy-one percent, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so it's pretty much maxed.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Well, they were talking to seventy-five percent, so that's.
Yeah, it's only four percent. Highest it's been in years. I kind of remember a year when it was that high.
Yeah, I know, I know, every year helps.
Yeah.
I can't remember, it had been ten years.
I don't even know if it was the first year that it was that high and then ever since then, it's been down, it's been down forty percent.
This is the highest it's been since the first year.
Sixty percent, yeah, this, it hasn't been this high for, forever. The other, the next item on, on this assumption page is, um.
I like, um, I like to comment really quick.
We should be in on the momentum. Yeah, go on.
Go on. Uh, we are, we have in this budget a stipend of five thousand dollars for, to be paid for a Deer Hill staff member and an Osgood staff member to help the principal with assistant principal duties. And this has come about because of our, uh, new requirements under evaluating the teachers and additional evaluations that we need to do for ESPs and, um, other positions. So the principals are finding that they are spending a lot more time doing evaluation because of the new requirements. Um, they're, they're observing classrooms a lot more and they're doing a lot more write-ups and so forth, so they feel the need is there to have someone help them with, um, discipline and test coordination and so forth. Um, we are expecting a, a job description to be put in our budget book for the next meeting when we go through the details, so we'll have more information on that for the committee.
And these people would continue to have teaching responsibilities, not.
Yes.
Correct, yes, yeah, 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 definitely, yeah.
Yes. And they would not be coming out of class to do this either, I might say, because this is outside of their duties.
This would be over above the classroom, I think, this, yeah.
Good, because stipend in positions should, the people who get stipends should not be doing this work during their regular school day.
Right, exactly, yeah, that's the idea of stipend.
No, that's not the case.
Any of them.
Then they're pa- getting paid twice for the same thing.
Exact, right.
Yeah, yeah.
It's double duty.
Right.
And we know that's correct.
And then this budget doesn't assume any increase in athletic fees, transportation fees or full-day kindergarten tuition, um, but.
And get a lot of twenty-dollar checks.
We may have to change that, that'll, that'll word it a little bit if, if the committee decides to add that twenty-dollar fee to the, um, transportation. And we are also assuming, uh, no change in unemployment, so we haven't increased that unemployment line yet, but it's still at fifty thousand dollars, that the funding was decided now. And then the, the last item on this other page is, um, we're assuming an increase in tuition rates for our current out-of-district placements. Uh, I know it says three percent, but when I look back at, at our worksheets and so forth, we're actually assuming a two point five percent increase. But we don't really know until the state comes out with the, with the numbers, because the state, um, decides the, the private funding rates. And then when we, the collabora- the collaborative, those are decided by the board of directors on, on that, with that rate.
So we, we had some indication that it's going to be three percent, which is why we're putting that in now.
Yeah.
Question, so the state contracts with the out-of-districts?
No, no, the state, the state decides what the rates are for the out-of-district tuition.
Really? That's what I said. That's really interesting. So it's kind of like insurance companies deciding.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, they decide, so it's a great.
It's kind of like Medicare.
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't realize that. So if we send somebody to Landmark, it's like the state's paying Landmark?
Yeah.
No, we're paying Landmark, they decide the percentage of increase.
No, no, we're, we're paying Landmark, they decide what the rate is.
Yes, the percentage of.
But we still assume the percentage.
Oh, that's what I mean. Yeah, 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 they're gonna set a fee with Landmark, the state sets the fee with Landmark and we pay it.
They don't, they, they don't make any, yeah.
Yeah.
We pay their bill.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Kind of like what insurance.
And that's what Landmark has to charge, like, can't charge beyond how.
Insurance companies said you pay me.
Rates, yeah.
Right. I didn't realize it went that way. That's really interesting, really interesting. It takes the burden off of us to some extent.
Yeah.
The one something that I did. Yeah, well, the problem is we have to wait and see what the rates are, so it's hard for us to budget early on.
I realize that, but then this, then the, this, we get the state rate, we don't just like, we're not negotiating, is this one small school?
Oh, no, 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 the state does it. The problem for the state is sometimes they come in late, so you vote your budget and then the state decides in January
No, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
I understand.
That they're gonna do the three percent increase retroactive.
But it's still, it gives us some bargaining chips because we're bargaining with Landmark, uh, we're just throwing out Landmark or any other program as a whole state.
Yes.
Yeah. And it, and it doesn't allow Landmark to charge whatever they want to depending on what school.
Because Cohouse is more affluent than Deitcher or whatever, like.
Right, right, yeah.
Right.
So they're all standard rates for all, all students.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Yeah.
That's very interesting. I didn't know that. I really didn't. I've been on this board for a while. Very interesting. Did you know that? I didn't. Okay. Do you, you know, Fajina and I didn't know that.
Sorry, sure.
That is very interesting. Did you know that?
No.
Yeah, wasn't that interesting stuff?
Uh-huh.
Probably still works.
The school was dropping two team chairs by the way.
That's something new, I'm excited.
What?
Any other?
The school was dropping two team chairs by the way.
Go ahead.
We all set? Any other questions on this page?
Yeah.
Okay.
On this slide.
That's really interesting.
This slide just shows, um, uh, what we consider as we build the budget for FY fifteen. So we, you know, we wanna preserve the quality of our programs and services and we, you know, try to seek and retain high-quality teachers and administrators. And we prepare for increased enrollment and population shifts or a decrease enrollment, we try to prepare for that, but we also at the same time want to maintain class size. We try to stay current in the curriculum and develop a plan to replace textbook materials and technology, as Mrs. Davis has been vouched for. Uh, as you recall, we implemented Envision Math last year, but in FY fifteen's budget, you'll see when we go through the detail, that we are requesting new math textbooks for middle school so that will fit in with the Envision Math from Osgood and Deer Hill, so there'll be that flow. And then we are also asking for high school social studies texts, I believe, from actually.
There are also some middle school texts that have to be added to social studies because it increases.
Yeah.
Social studies is a, I doubt you're.
Can I ask a, a question?
Yeah.
Um, are you, what are you looking, are you still assessing which textbooks for the middle school or have you decided on a program?
The directive was given to the department chair and to the assistant principal, principals of the six to eight, that, um, they were to align strictly with Cotton Core, number one. Secondly, to align and add a bit of rigor to, uh, Envision. And when we looked at Vision and researched what was for grade six and Envision, we wanted something with a little bit more rigor than was there. And so, right now, it's in research stage. We should be piloting at the moment, but we're a little bit delayed. So hopefully, the teachers are looking at the text right now, they have received sample text, they're reviewing them, trying to see what the ideas in it and they will decide as a department what they feel is best, so that's where we are right now.
I'm just interested in that in particular because I know that the sixth grade textbook was actually a seventh grade textbook.
Correct.
So if we're looking for more rigor, are we gonna give the sixth graders eighth grade textbooks now?
No. Well, it's not necessarily more rigor as in a more advanced.
Well, there, I know there were sections that, whole sections that didn't get addressed because it was too advanced.
It's a seventh grade text. It doesn't belong in grade six.
Right. Exactly.
And we don't want a grade seven text to come back in. What we want to do is to continue the way and the mastery in which Envision has successfully done.
Excellent. Okay.
And we don't want to bring in grade five into grade six lost. We want to continue that growth, if that makes sense.
Right.
Yeah.
I forgot to ask the question. Um, the, uh, changing from the two sped team chair positions to a special needs coordinator and a part-time secretary? Uh, what's the rationale behind that?
Uh, the rationale, and I, we would have had, um, Mrs. Samino come, but there's been a death in her family, so she's heading to Pennsylvania. But the rationale is that she wants to wrap it into one person who really oversees the out-of-district after working the chair. Um, and then in terms of realigning how it's done in the elementary and the high schools, elementary and secondary, I would like to have her come and address that in the specifics.
So the special needs coordinator would do the work of some of the, the speed, uh, current sped team chair?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the help of a secretary?
Well, she's asking for a part-time secretary, not a full-time, so that that money, the monies would be aligned.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Is that realistic, that one person will be able to replace two?
I think the way she's thinking of structuring it, yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, I think the half-time secretary also will pick up some of the, the paperwork of the two team chairs that are doing that, are doing now.
The paperwork.
So it needs to be a part-time secretary that understands the complexities of the law, special ed law and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yes, it, they'd be trained, or some, they might be somebody who applies that's already trained.
And I would like to make a suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some of the school districts I know in Hana use an intern. There are really good programs in special ed, like at Simmons.
Yeah.
And if you can get an intern, um, and the interns are usually, you know, uh, at the intern level, they're almost all done with the program.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, right.
And they'll do an internship for six months and they could assist that special needs coordinator so that, uh, that's not. I just think you're gonna need some more staffing there.
Would, would they only go for three months at a time and switch over?
Nice idea.
No, they go for six months.
For six months if they switch out, so they have, you have a turn.
Yes, and they, and they put in quite a few hours.
So you have a turnover of every six months?
Well, yeah, but it's, you know, but that's a half a year. And you get a pretty qualified person because this is towards their year and a half into, they basically only have one semester, like, usually, of their one semester, or they, they're usually college, definitely college educated. Definitely one, uh, one year for sure and sometimes one and a half years, uh, through their coursework. And they would be very, you know, a lot of them are very, they've already had to take, uh, you know, special ed law and all that type of thing.
So maybe when she comes back, we can.
Well, I'm sure that the superintendent in the little voice might, you know, recommendation.
Yes. Yes.
Because I am concerned about going from two to one, a secretary.
And she'll be, she, the planner, she'll be here on the twenty second when we present that detailed budget.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, that was my next question.
And we should have a job description in that budget also, that budget.
Right. You can get two interns, one for each semester, I mean, you know, uh, you know, they work under the supervision of the special needs coordinator, I believe.
That, that was my next question when Mrs. Samino might be here because we bought into that whole concept because we were told that Desi was requiring it.
You have to check with those rules. Right.
So if we're going to change.
Right.
Direction now, we need to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Right, I, I will say that in my, um, my last district when I was overseeing special education, my assistant director, that is, all they did was out of district. And then they came into schools and they did three-year vows, it was their only function, they didn't do any of the other things I do though, that's all they were dedicated to and that's all we asked them to do.
Question, then why do we agree to the two spec, special team chairs each month?
We, because of the, well, at the time with Mrs. Valani, she was answering to the coordinated program review. And it's been running for a year and we're looking to see how we can improve the service and she's been looking to revamp to make sure it can be done more effectively. But I don't wanna speak for all of her philosophy and thinking, I'd rather have her come back on the twenty second and address it with you directly and answer your questions directly.
Correct.
Fairness, she would have come tonight and she might have had to be down.
Any other question?
No.
Okay, um, so.
Is there a question back there?
Yes, one of the other reasons why we needed, pardon me, oh, Diane Hart, CPAC president.
You done it for yourself? Identify.
Um, one of the reasons that we had, um, gone with the team chair is not just because that's what was recommended, but it was also for compliance. The review showed that we were out of compliance and that's one of the duties of nice people, so how is a secretary gonna follow through on that? And the other thing, we've had, uh, a lot of calls from out of district parents saying that there's, um, it, they're, they're overworked, the two team chairs as it is. And they're not even getting there, sometimes Lori, they had to split the cases between Lori and the two team chairs for the out of district people because the out of, the team chairs were overworked as it was. And that they're not getting to know the students and really getting to understand replacements and correct if services are right, that sort of thing. So how are we cutting back on two overworked staff people?
Well, yeah, when she comes back.
Those are the best messages to use, right?
I think, yeah, then I think, you know, we talked to Lori about that.
Yeah, and the feedback I have had from parents, as well as myself, but I've had from many parents, is they feel the meetings are going much better with the team chairs. They really like the team chairs.
Go ahead.
Um, so we will continue to utilize our offsets, you know, like the fees and tuition gifts, circuit break the grants to, to reduce our budget increases. As we've been doing right along in the last, you know, many years. We'll continue to seek energy conservation and cost reduction measures, we're still working with the alternative energy committee, hopefully, you know, something will happen there soon, we, I don't know, did you see an email today?
We just got correspondence about, um, SREC two being implemented, or being, being, they're having ho, public hearings.
Hopefully, well, they, they're having meetings on, on, on the next, within that space, yeah, so hopefully with.
They're starting the public hearing process. On what? SREC two.
Uh-huh, that's.
The, um, the normal energy credit.
The solar energy.
Oh, right, yeah, so they're gonna, uh, hopefully look at one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other thing, um, can I say something?
Yes.
Um, what was I gonna say, it had to do with, um, the energy thing, oh, thank God, I'm just tired.
That's okay, we can come back.
Yeah.
And then, um, we again would like to build on district accomplishments from FY thirteen and this year in the middle, and, uh, you know, I listed some examples, I don't know, you can read those on your own, maybe you have, you have read them.
Oh, I know.
But, um, things like.
I know what I wanted to say.
Go ahead.
It had to do with the maintenance things, um, it's kinda energy, kinda not, I mean, one of my pet peeves was the fact that we were maintaining our vehicles.
Yeah.
And the people who are maintaining our vehicles, the buses and, uh, things like that, and the, uh, different, uh, transportation systems were paying not at nonprofit, uh, fees. They were just going there and buying at retail prices.
Yeah, we've changed all that.
So that's all good now?
Yes, yeah, 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 we're doing well there, yeah.
Okay, that's cool. Okay, good.
We're buying parts at a good, a good price.
Right, okay.
And not paying sales tax.
We're not paying sales tax, and we're getting a better price.
Yes, and we're. Yeah, and I know we're doing, the new bus has environmental stuff on it, that's good, okay, yeah, go on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, so far, you know, we've implemented and trained staff on our new online teacher evaluation tool, that's baseline edge, that's one of the things that Louis Davis has been working on with staff.
You don't have to read all.
Okay, so I don't, okay, you don't, I don't have to, no, okay, we're good, okay.
Yeah.
We're gonna read it.
Yeah, we're very good readers.
Well, you read it this afternoon.
School, and we all did well.
And then just the, the last item that, on this page is, um, how we build our budget and so forth.
They're all good, written expression. Right.
So we, we start our budget every year from zero and we, we involve the teachers and the principals and the department chairs and they all have a say in.
Yeah.
What, what the needs are, what we need for, for the next year.
That's something.
You know, it gives the, the staff and principals a voice in determining how we spend.
That's cool.
So the next slide is, um.
Probably the most important.
Yes. Student, current student enrollment and cast, class size projections for FY fifteen. So as I mentioned before, we don't know full day kindergarten yet, but, uh, we lowered that by one teacher. So we have in this presently five teachers for full day kindergarten, five full teachers in, in the full day kindergarten class. Um, if those, if these enrollment numbers are correct, um, Joseph Osborne will see an enrollment of about plus eleven students from where we are today. But I think that all depends on the kindergarten class coming in.
And that, that'll change the same number of children in the kindergarten class.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then at Deer Hill, um, if, if these numbers are, are correct again, you know, they're all moved down, there usually isn't much movement at Deer Hill, it's, you know, maybe one or two students up or down. But we're, um, projecting a, an enrollment of thirty-four students less this, for next year than this year. And one teacher less in grade three, one position less in grade three.
No way that could move to grade six?
Yeah, they're all going to middle school.
Yeah.
They need to be certified.
Right, I mean, it's just because it's a shift of salary of a different, different, uh, position.
So kids shift.
Right, right.
Position will go. Yeah.
And then in middle school, we're, yes.
Uh, excuse me, uh, remember from our teacher contract, does this, uh, get a, the tag because they're going to a different, um, school? Remember about evaluation, things like that, you know, we had to do the evaluation tool.
It would depend on who goes.
Yeah.
If they're not certified for grade six, they wouldn't go.
Okay. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
If they do, then it would.
Then they're considered a new, you know, the, it's, it's a different regulation, no?
Right, we're keeping track of that.
Okay, you keep track, good, because we spent a lot of time on that.
Uh, middle school is where we, we see the, you know, the, the large increase, um, we're, we're projecting an increase of about forty-one students overall, um, in middle school. And, and this year we've had an increase of fifteen students from FY thirteen to FY fourteen. So the last two years, we'll see an increase of about fifty-six students total. That's where our bubble is, I guess, you know, moving up. Uh, and then in the high school, um, we'll see approximately two students left, less than, than we have currently. Um, overall about sixteen student increase depending on kindergarten for the, for the whole district.
It will be interesting if the retention rate stays pretty high, then our high school will be bursting at the seams in a few years.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
If our retention rate stays high. We wanna keep that retention.
We wanna keep it high.
Yes, we wanna keep it.
Right.
We don't want it to be lower just because it's crowded.
Correct.
Right, I mean, the higher it is, the more chapter seventy, seventy, seventy.
Correct, we wanna be able to respond to that ahead of time because we don't want to lose students.
But, uh, open that's not the losing, it's the assignment, it'll allow.
Well, we don't want them to go at a higher rate just because it's, it's.
Because of other reasons.
Uh, you know, getting crowded for that period of time, so we just have to plan for it, that's all, that's it.
Yep.
It's around the corner, not yet.
So as I mentioned before, Ju- July, January twenty eighth is when, um, enrollment begins with kindergarten. And I guess they'll do a press release so the paper will put an ad into that, let people know that, and then, um.
And by the way, we have two years because the biggest class is the one that's a sixth grade going into seventh. So that's, you know, we get a little inkling of it for the first two years and then we get slammed, so you got a couple of years before we get slammed.
Yeah. Right. Yeah.
With that really big class.
Um, question?
Yeah.
Why do you usually get anticipated numbers for, for incoming high school population from, for eighth to ninth grade?
Um, in terms of whether students would leave for private school?
Well.
Right, go out of district.
Yeah.
Some of our parents don't even tell us till school opens.
Right.
Yeah, they don't have to.
So we don't know.
So we, we actually look at the history of what happened previous, previous years.
No, I mean, there is a statistical average of, you know, the percentage of kids that leave, I just, I didn't know, I think in one of the school council meetings that I was in with Carolyn, they, she had talked a little bit about, you know, trying to assess that.
Yeah.
Gets an information beforehand, kinda like we're trying to do with kindergarten.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Like an exit interview type thing, like an exit interview, I think that's what they were doing with high school.
So you're a Harvard.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Certain, uh, negative vibes can set off.
Oh, I know.
Mathscanemoney, like when we had the, uh, work to rule type of thing going on, that, that was not a good year. Uh, we, we had a much lower retention rate. So we wanna be able to be, you know, in a good place, we wanna bargain well, we wanna do everything we need to do well, just be at the top of our game, that's all.
I mean, just so you know, we tried to track who puts in applications in the spring so we can look for them.
I mean, the other.
Right.
But not all students, uh, actually say whether they're departing or not, sometimes we find out when school opens, they're not there, we see.
Right.
Well, and like Helene said as well, it's not gonna be this next year, it's gonna be the year after that, it's interesting about how many.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yes.
I mean, you know, the other thing I looked at was the total loss from eighth to ninth grade, and it was almost steady at sixteen students.
Yeah.
Regardless of what the size of the class was coming in, so you'll probably get the, probably the same number that will go elsewhere. But that big bubble will, there'll be more in it, less percentage wise leaving.
Right.
Right.
And also in the past, we requested, say, a half position for middle school.
Right.
But then have not, did not see the students, so we, we didn't fill the position.
Okay.
So sometimes we don't know whether we need, you know, we think we need the position, but then when it happens, we decide, well, we don't need the position.
Right. Right.
Right, and believe it or not, another variable is how some of our sports teams do, because we have students who are recruited to private school, but if you have a, a girls', uh, team that needs, uh, that wins a state basketball championship.
Okay.
The, uh, you know, and that, and you have some kids who are, are freshman or sophomore year, they're more likely to stay for another couple of years. So, you know, we have to, we're on top of our game in all areas, i- it's a real positive.
I wanna mention one more thing about kindergarten, you know, how we were off on the numbers last year.
Yep.
Yes.
Because Osborne does poll the preschools in the local area, but they found last year that many parents that went back to work took their kids to a preschool that was close to where they work. So they weren't in preschool in town, they were in preschool wherever they worked.
Oh, right.
Right.
And we had really no way of knowing, of, of tracking that. So that was a big issue from when.
For our preschools, makes perfect sense.
Preschool going into kindergarten, yeah.
Preschool.
I mean, 'cause we could poll around here in town, but that's not giving us everybody.
Right.
Can I have some more?
So that would, that was an issue.
Well, even more important, we have the census we after it, because then we could poll everybody on the census and ask them if they intend to have their children here.
Right. Yeah, exactly. Any other questions on the projection? So again, um, we just saw this before, we're, we're, uh, proposing a four point nine percent, nine six seven percent increase, or eight hundred four thousand eight sixty-four for right now.
And basically what should have happened is FY fourteen should have been more than two point three. It should have been, uh, I would say more like three point three. Cause if you look at four eighty-three, then, right.
Almost close to five.
It, yeah.
Four point nine, four point eight.
Yeah.
Well, you add another two hundred four dollars.
No, I'm talking about from, uh, FY fourteen.
Yeah, that's about what the difference is, yeah.
Would have been two hundred thousand dollars more, which would have been kind of like three point two or three point three, right?
Oh, I see, you're right.
Mathematical.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have to look at it like that, cause we, you know, then we would have been a three point three and then this would have been, uh, you know, going to six hundred thousand, right? Four, it would, yes, would have been going like one percent or one point two percent more than, than previous year.
Yeah, and maybe I can make one comment too, because I'm sure folks who are listening in at home and as we go to the town and talk about our budget.
Yeah.
The fact is that we have held off for several years on a foreign language teacher. We held off on faculty as the numbers were growing, and, but we've reached the point where we can no longer hold back. We really, we, otherwise we're gonna have thirty-five students in a room, we can't have that. So we're at a very critical mass where we need to add these positions, or else we're going to have an awful lot of students sitting in one room at a time. So what the town might think is that, why are we suddenly adding so much to the budget, but really, we've held on as long as we could and we can't hold on any longer, so we need to start putting people in. We should have put some of these people in earlier, like the foreign language teacher, we no longer can wait, we need them.
I do, I just think, can I say something? I think supplements of this should be, you know, like when you get certain classes that everyone's brawny act and they have a little letter attached, you know, your kid, you know, is doing really well, it's just like, you know, this is a brawny act year. Well, I think attached to it needs to be an explanation of the kindergarten thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because the advisory's gonna see this and stuff like that, I, I really think that this is a special situation, very unusual to this year. I mean, a two hundred thousand dollar, um, you know, hit on, on this year because of last year.
Right.
Needs an indent.
I totally agree.
Because people are gonna look at this and that's gonna be hard.
Mm-hmm.
Just while. Cause otherwise it's completely different, I mean, chart, you're going like, uh, last year's three point three, this year four point five, I mean, that's a whole lot different than looking last year two point three, this year almost five percent.
Right, no, we don't disagree, and I agree with your thought there.
Correct. Yes. Not just a footnote, like a whole, uh.
Yeah, we'll figure something out.
Yeah. And then when you present to the, um, or you meet with the different people, the new, uh, town manager, the advisory, whatever.
All this stuff, yeah, 'cause that's, that is a good piece.
Yeah.
This next slide, um, really, this is just showing all our other accounts that go into, um, what we need to educate the students.
Right, excuse me, Erin's not here tonight, so Erin needs a one-on-one.
We, we have a media lead on it.
Yeah, and they really emphasize that about the kindergarten.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So just, just, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna go through every account, but you see these accounts on a monthly basis, cause I'm trying to, so just, this is other accounts that we use to educate the students, um.
No. Yes. Right. Right.
Grants and, and fee accounts and so forth, uh, we're projecting another two million twenty-one thousand eight dollars to, for next year. So if you add that with what we're requesting of the seventeen million, the total cost around the district is about nineteen million sixty-two thousand nine hundred two dollars.
Are you aware, are you aware of any grants that are out there that are potentially in the pipeline that are new, you know, where, if it's the state or federal number?
Uh, new grant was the, the security grant that we just got recently, but, um, nothing, no.
I haven't knew any.
Nothing yet.
Nothing, nothing like the R, A R R A grants that we have through the.
Uh, question, how long do you expect that we're gonna get fifty-six thousand, only fifty-six thousand left in gifts from, to the school name?
Yeah. Um, there's gifts.
From the average.
When do you give the awards?
Well, you know, we're just, yeah, we're kind of going back to average what we've had in the past and so forth, I mean, we would, we would love to see more, but we don't know what, you know, what, what would make happen.
Okay. This is silly. Okay. Okay.[1703.44] Do you just, yeah, do you just find here?
Yeah. It's really just a forecast number. That's, you know, that's a lot of, a definite number.
Okay.
Next slide shows, um, all our, you know, our ten cost sectors that we have, and the percentages of each. So as you know, salaries is always the, the biggest, um, cost sector that we have. Um, it's over seventy-seven percent forecasted for next year.
What was it last year?
It, it ranges about seventy-five to seventy-six percent actually, so it's a little, it's a little higher because of the new positions that we're asking for.
Right. And also it's a year of the contract, cause this is entering the third year.
And the increases. Right, yeah. Third year, right.
Remember, cause what was the percentage increase on the third year? I should have it by my.
Two point two five.
Two five.
Two, uh, two point two, two five, two, I can't.
Yeah, was it the highest in the third year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, a little slightly higher.
I think it's the same as this year, both two point two five, I believe. The first year was.
They were both two point two five?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Well, did, at the beginning, you said that what the salary increases accounted for about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you went down with the kindergarten expense and.
Six hundred thousand.
Well, that's most of what we, yeah.
Right, right.
Four hundred.
Well, that, what makes up the eight hundred thousand is that those two items and plus the new position, basically.
Correct. Yeah, well, it was just, correct. What was the salary increase from, uh?
Well, when we did the presentation a few weeks ago, I think it was four hundred thirty something thousand just on increases, not, 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 not new positions or anything like, at that point.
Four hundred thirty seven. Probably ninety. Yeah, from fourteen to fifteen, from two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if you need to go through any of this, but you can see that the percentages, um, they're pretty much in line with, with last year and so forth.
Right.
And this is pretty much in line with most districts. The salaries cover about eighty percent.
Yeah.
Yes, right. Salaries, as we know, we're a service industry, that salaries is most of our budget.
So we're cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna turn on tomorrow.
So I mean, it, it does show that there really is not a room, a lot of room that we can maneuver and, and cut costs. I mean, you know, it's hard to cut specialty tuitions or.
Right.
It's hard to cut utility costs. I mean, we try to be economical with, you know, going up to bid and so forth, but that type of thing, it's, it's tough to cut the costs.
I mean, probably the best thing that I've seen over the last year is that the state revenues are up.
Yeah.
Quite extensively. And for the year, it'll be up probably close to twelve and a half to thirteen percent for the year. I haven't seen December's numbers, but as of, as of November, it was ten point five percent up for the entire year, year to year. And December is usually the highest, uh, income for the state because of sales tax and, uh, end of the year bonuses that come in from, from, uh, income tax.
Yeah.
So that usually comes out on the fifteenth of January, I'll have an idea of what.
Well, that's what we'll look like next year.
I, I can't imagine it's gonna be any more than, they had, the, the state had estimated twelve point five percent for the month, so my suspicion is gonna be for the year, it'll probably close to twelve percent, eleven percent. I mean, it's a, it's gonna be a, a big increase on the state level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In addition to town, this has done very well from fees and excise tax in particular, um, that has helped.
So that might.
That's all the pros and cons.
Yes.
So I, I think honestly, from the eight hundred thousand, it, it's a lot, but this is what we need to do to afford and pay for the schools.
Yeah.
They're a high performing district, they, it's, the salaries are a majority of it.
Right. You know, the thing with the eight hundred thousand, just to, so you're aware, you know, we met as the budget planning group and so forth, and part of this eight hundred thousand was put forth as a ten-year plan, I believe, from the, the interim town manager. Um, you know, next year, there's a concern that everything is just gonna drop FY sixteen. You know, that's, that may be another tough year, because once you have that eight hundred thousand built into the budget, then, you know, you're gonna need that increase each year.
Yeah.
So FY sixteen could really be a tough year for us.
FY sixteen.
But that'll be, but that'll be.
Yeah, not fifteen. This is FY fifteen we're talking about. You know, that's a big bump in FY fifteen, but when you look at that ten-year forecast that's been put forth, and I don't know, you know, if that's gonna be changed or not, with the new town manager coming on board, but.
Yeah. So that's what we have to, that's what we have to make sure.
But that'll be.
Because of what factors?
It just drops down.
What drops down?
FY sixteen, the revenues.
Cause.
Revenue's dropped.
Oh, the world's revenues gonna be.
Yeah. Growth, growth crops and revenue.
Yeah, I, I see what you mean.
But you also have incorporated in that the, the tax base.
Yeah, and just for our listening audience, yeah. What we're talking about.
Yeah. So you don't wanna fall off a cliff, you know, in FY sixteen.
Out of that four point nine increase, two point five of it is really faculty, about one point four is the kindergarten transfer, leaving only one percent for everything else.
Yes. Dr. Shugerman? And this might be a, a good point of segue, because while we're looking at a, a budget being nineteen million, what we're not taking into consideration are all the items that are gonna have to go before capital committing for this year. And in particular, uh, bringing up, I know Mrs. Hirth was today at the coffee, we had a superintendent's coffee, we had about twenty people there, you think? About twenty? Um, and one of the questions was what is happening with technology in town and what are we doing? And of course, we certainly know that we will be meeting with the subcommittee, but most certainly, you know, we've worked out and are working, further working out the details at looking at the one-to-one initiative and continuing with an upgrade, so that we know we're gonna go before capital. And we're going to be asking for between a hundred eighty and two hundred thousand dollars this year and next month, looking for that. That will be detailed when we get there, as well as we need another hundred five thousand dollars to complete the twenty-first century classrooms between the middle and the high school. Deer Hills then done, uh, the vendors were supposed to be in Osford over the holiday break, as I explained to the parents, and as they came, the custodians were waxing the floors, and, uh, schedules weren't totally coordinated, so I believe they have to still return and finish up, but.
I think it was a little electrical work, so it's, that, that's a wrong attempt.
There was some electrical work being done, but when we sit and we look at the I T, we're basically looking at about, um, two, three, about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars will be going before the capital committee to discuss for the technology. And I think that's really important to know, that we're not able to take that out of our budget. And I will say some districts are able to take it out of their budget. We don't have that capacity here, the way the budget's structured in the town. So I think that the committee at the very least should know that we've created this format of what we're going to be looking for, and aside from that, obviously, we need buses, and that's not, you know, unfamiliar to everybody, that will be looking for two buses this year, and that's almost two hundred thousand dollars. So there's a number of things, when you look at the, uh, capital items, that we're probably looking at about five hundred thousand dollars worth that we need to go before capital for, that we've already.
And, and so with the special town meeting, that a lot of the monies have been incorporated into the capital budget.
Right.
Through that, so that transfer helped and will help both the town and the schools.
Right, and before Mr. Milonowski left, he had all of the departments come and sit together and build out a ten-year, um, capital plan, so the things were really mapped out, so we could all see what we had to do and, and where the trade-offs had to come among all of the departments, because we're all in this together, as far as I'm concerned. It's not just the schools, and it's not just the fire, and it's not just D P W, but we really have to share the responsibility for all of the community. I realize my responsibility's to children, so I am going to fight good and hard to make sure they have what they need. But we did wanna let the committee know that at this point, we're looking at a, um, just a little over three hundred thou, about three hundred five thousand dollars for technology between I T equipment upgrades, a one-to-one initiative, and completing the twenty-first century classroom between the middle and the high school. So they'll have the projectors, and they'll have the documenting cameras and so forth, and have to be able to do what you saw Mr. Benel do when he came here.
And this is not anything that is not expected from the state, so this is not necessarily, I, I don't wanna say it's unfunded mandate, it's what's necessary, the state is recommending we do and requiring, so this is nothing that is.
Those park assessments.
Uh, beyond what is de rigueur for education in the state.
Right, we have to have some technology as a base for the upcoming park assessments. It's not a choice, it's mandated. I'm happy to say that we had to submit our documentation in December, um, to the, to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and when we did, we are probably, just about half the towns and cities across the state have been able to meet the mandates, and we are in that category, thank goodness, because of what we're doing. So. But I felt it was necessary for the committee to know that we are putting together the one-to-one. Um, it was discussed a little bit at the coffee, we didn't do a lot of detail, because we knew you had not heard first, and I, I was comfortable sharing without you hearing first, so I did want you to know. But the specifics are that we're looking at a hundred eighty thousand for a one-to-one initiative, a hundred five for the completion of roofs, and then about another twenty thousand for I T equipment that would be necessary for some of the other things.
The one-to-not, one-to-initiative would be what grades?
Uh, right now, the discussion is to do grades seven and eight next year.
For the, uh, for a hundred thousand, is that what you're saying?
For a hundred eighty thousand.
Hundred eighty thousand, that would be seventh and eighth grade?
Yes, and then the following year, push out to through twelfth grade, and I think we're looking at about, you know, obviously, we're not going to discuss next year as a matter of fact, but I think we're looking at more like four hundred thousand dollars next year to complete that task that's been mapped out for us.
Okay.
Mrs. Shugerman, sorry.
Right.
Well, a question?
Yes.
At the coffee, the parents were wondering, the parents of high school, high school parents, there were a lot of high school parents there, and they were, you know, saying with this, what you were proposing, that any student that was a sophomore older would miss out on one-to-one initiatives. And, um, w- why is this not starting with, say, grades eleven and twelve instead of seven, eight, so that e- everyone can experience this, rather than the older kids completely missing out on twenty-first century education, really?
It has to do with mixed classes at the high school level that we don't have at the middle school, and we can't do four years next year. We already know we cannot build out four years at once, so that's why we targeted the middle school first and then moved to the high school second.
Are there that many classes that have ninth graders with eleventh and twelve?
Yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Davis has got, yes.
Yeah, yes.
Other than English.
Hold on, I'll go there.
Yeah, it's because our school's so small, everything's all mixed up.
But we're required, the kids are required to take so many classes as a freshman and as a sophomore.
Freshman year's a little bit different.
Right.
Because there are certain things that are required that have to happen in the freshman year, but the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades, you know, it's all about fitting it in within the block, and, for example, sometimes you get a twelfth grader who couldn't fit the algebra in, in ninth grade, so they're taken in in twelfth grade.
Right. It's almost.
No, I know, but I just remember several times my boys were trying to take certain classes, and they said, you're not allowed to take that as a sophomore. You have to be a senior, or you're not, you know, he didn't take it.
If you, it would, yeah, but it would depend on the class, but an awful lot of them are on mixed grades.
I can speak to the grade in grade nine, and the only strict requirement is English for two semesters.
Right.
Uh, other than that, we tend to beer in everything else. Not to a great degree. Uh, every child takes math, but not the same math every year, and not in the same track in the second. Uh, history's the same, there's a little variance. There's a difference in everything but the English class from grade nine, and it exacerbates as we go to grade ten, eleven, and twelve. Because of that, there's no consistency. If we were to put a one-on-one initiative in grade nine, there would, there would be teachers and students in most classes where there are some, but not all. So it wouldn't be consistent, and that would be the best place to put it, if we could do four years.
Mm-hmm.
But we can't. So unfortunately.
I mean, I have a.
It's just a shame. I mean, it's, obviously, I have a high school student, but the two women to the right of me, two behind me, were all in the same position of withdrawal.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, you know, one of the problems, I, I have a freshman and I have a s- a senior, and they're in the same class, and it, it's just the nature of the, the district.
Really disappointed.
Right. Right. Yeah. It, it, one thing I can say, it's frustrating when my kids were here, uh, both of them were through construction. Neither one of them, uh, except my daughter, I think, got one year or two out of anything new. Every school that they were in was being constructed, under-construted, because the construction seemed to go according to how my kids picked the school. So Osgood Construction, Deer Hill Construction, High School Construction. My son always, he, he began, that hammering became the background music of the school, school.
What do you want to do in engineering?
Every single year, from kindergarten on up.
And kindergarten, yeah.
Construction. It was just really weird. Didn't it happen? You know, what was I to do, you know? So.
If we could have started with a four-year plan and, and been able to think about achieving that kind of money.
Right.
We would have, but because when we sat with Mr. Milonowski and he was mapping out the ten years, and we were all sitting as departments at a table, you know, we had to think about the facilities that need to be done in this building, and the fact that we have to be able to pick children up, we had to make a decision where we were going to ask for the bulk of the money this year versus next year. So that's how we came about the, we would start two years this year in a pilot and push out next year.
Right. It's a good question.
I could add also that we both did research at technology conferences. We talked to Apple, we talked to school districts, as to how can we do this, having the best effect. We would love to do the high school, prepare them for twenty-first century college, et cetera. But this seemed to be the recurrent, that it needs to be a captive place where everyone is on board, all the teachers are. It didn't have to be seventh and eighth, and because of the age restriction, we can really, we're really about six.
If we could have done seven through twelve at once, I would have really, uh, I know what other districts have, and I know we talked at the coffee today, the fact that other districts did overrides, and we're not asking for an override.
Or just, I. Right. Right, cause we discussed, um, although.
Yes. So, thank you.
Are you all done?
No, almost done.
May I also ask, I know as we're going through, um, actually, I should wait, I'm out of turn, because you have communications that's coming.
That was gonna be, I don't wanna forget this, um, I'm not texting on my, uh, my phone, I, I have something written here that I have to remember.
Well, I think we'll have to, it's a calendar. That's all, that's all.
They've done.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh.
It's just the calendar, it's, you know, so next meeting, it's a line item budget, and then, um, town meeting, I guess, is scheduled for April twenty-eighth.
Yeah, I got it. Yeah. No problem.
Yes. Drop it, I think.
Um, so for those of you at home, not texting on my phone, I just have another written here that I wanna make sure I don't forget. Uh, there was, um, last night, there was a monthly meeting of the, uh, special education, um, meeting, which had a special education advocate, which discussed the parents, what an advocate does, and why they're helpful. Very, uh, good meeting, Laurie Belong, Laurie Belong was there, um, some of the others, nursery school teachers were there as well, uh, was well, well received. And also next Wednesday, there is, uh, January fifteenth, ten thirty A M. to noon, is a coffee at Helene Child for parent-to-parent support coffee, and it's an opportunity for, uh, for the parents of young children to understand what special education is. Um, there's also, uh, the website is Cohasset CPAC dot org, where the address at her house. And February fourth is basic rights speaker for Federation of Children, with special needs explaining the I E P process and how I E P, which is individual education plan, can help your child, and also that's on the, their website as well. So.
That's always excellent.
So I didn't forget the last time.
Thank you.
Oh, I saw your, oh, there I am.
Yeah, no, he's there, and they kept going off, I'm like, oh, wait a minute. Um, and the other one, uh, which came up in between last meeting and this meeting, um, the O P E D, um, meeting, uh, committee approached me to join their committee. Um, initially it was informal. We did have a meeting between last meeting and now, and I'd like to have the approval of the committee to continue on that. It is looking at options for the, uh, other post, uh, employment benefit options for the town. And it's, um, uh, Tim Davis is, is running it. Um, he's got a lot of experience with, um, these sorts of things. It's a, you probably, if you went to the special town meeting.
Right.
It's that group, and they had invited someone from the school committee and asked for the chair to be there, and I said that would be, I think reasonable, if it's reasonable.
Sounds good. Be our guest.
And John Chapman, uh, he was a lot about.
You know, the group is there, they are right on the ball. I mean, it was, it was wonderful.
Yeah, he has stocked it in, uh, stuff from Harvard and all kinds of stuff.
They're, they're very, um, very matter-of-fact. Um, it was one of the most efficient meetings I've ever been to. It was.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, he's in number four.
Middle of the snowstorm, said we're gonna be there, got there five thirty, we're down at six thirty, boom, done.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, very helpful.
Organist.
Um, let me see, is there anyone else? Yeah.
Um, we do have something that came up today.
Okay.
And, uh, it had come in during the break, uh, because of the timing, actually, it came in on, I'm sorry, on Thursday the second, because of the storms, we couldn't do anything on it. So, uh, Dr. Lisa Lewis is a chiropractor in town, and she wrote me on Thursday asking, she would like to plan a fundraising event to benefit the Cohasset Food Pantry called Family Fun Food Razer. And she would like to do it on March second at two o'clock and use our auditorium for it, and she described it, uh, in her email as a family-friendly event. Um, the entrance fee for folks to come to this event is by bringing a bag of groceries per person, no more than two bags per family. And that they, apparently she was in another town, or friends in another town, that for five years they've been doing it, and it's become so successful that when they get food, they need to dispense it to other pantries in other towns. And she sees this as a real win-win situation, where people come together for entertainment in the auditorium, and at the same time, they're benefiting the food pantry, which she hopes to see it grow. So she had called to see, she also sponsors as well as entertainment. She had called to see if there was any way she could get on the agenda, and of course, it's quite late, and, and because I was tied up all day, Mr. DeGennaro took the time to speak with her. And we talked to her about the cost of the custodians, for which they said, she said they would be able to cover the cost of the custodian, um, and you talked to her about the liability insurance for which there's no need. And, uh, but the problem is that we need you, like the Relay for Life will be coming next meeting, we need it approved by the committee, but if we wait till the next meeting, unfortunately, it will be too late for them to do the fundraiser. So I'm bringing it to you tonight to ask you if this is something the committee would be willing to approve. It is a fundraiser, the, uh, obviously, the payment is a bag of groceries. The purpose is to benefit the Cohasset Food Pantry in town, our families, with the option, the, uh, the outcome that they'll be eating family fun, um, entertainment and so forth for families here in the auditorium only.
Is, is the space available?
Yes.
And would it be during school?
No, it's a Sunday. Sunday, March second at two o'clock.
Or is it, oh. Okay.
Yeah.
Did she say anything about the type of entertainment that's being provided, you know, what the details are of that?
She said something, it was a musical band or something like that, music, entertainment.
Any food and drinks and stuff?
No, no.
No food, so that, can we, you just bring the food, you can't eat it.
The break is here.
You just bring the food, you don't eat it, yes, yeah.
That's right, you can look at it.
So maybe we could write that down, if there's not food and drinks, cause that would make it less, uh, of an impact on the auditorium.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Which would require the.
Or, or can we get sued outside of the auditorium, which we usually have.
And you said we're okay in, in terms of legalities and stuff?
Yes, yes, and the auditorium is available, and, and because, you know, the. Yes, yes, and the auditorium is available, and, and because, you know, the fact that they want to donate to the food pantry, it seems like such a worthwhile endeavor.
Right. I can speak to the fact that the food pantry has a major need, the social services league that I'm on the board, um, has been working with the food pantry, and it's like never-ending, I mean, the number of families now that are, are really needing on the food pantry over the years has increased quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
In Cohasset.
Mm-hmm.
Just the Cohasset one, and other food pantries that we give to. We don't just get to Cohasset.
Sure, but I do believe that the committee needs to approve it.
Anyone have any, uh, concerns?
No, I think you met all the concerns, if you as our C E O of the district.
No?
Okay. And then as for a motion to approve the, uh, approval of the, what is it, the, um,
I make a motion.
What about, what, what was the name?
It would be the Cohasset, uh, called the Family Fun Food Racer.
Uh, um, for the Family Fun Food Racer.
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the Family Fun Food Racer using the auditorium on, uh, Sunday, uh, beginning at two, ending at.
Should say six?
It's in there for four hours. Whatever, six.
I would, I would say from start to end, from zero.
Yeah, correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Paul and Mary?
Hi.
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 Hi, thank you, and we'll call Dr. Lewis, I'm sure she will be to come.
And I think that the, the Walker.
The Relay for Life, yes, they'll be coming next week, next meeting, excuse me.
Um, excuse me, um, if she could maybe work with, uh, Jack Public and, uh, see if, you know, maybe some of our students would be interested in helping because, you know, that's part of our mission, to get students involved in things like this.
Okay. Great idea.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I'm making it over that.
So if we're letting them use our space, it's nice that our students will benefit too by being encouraged to be part of this.
Absolutely.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other, uh, communications?
No.
Now, uh, before we leave, maybe call, uh, who we could schedule, or we, do a reschedule for our meeting.
We have hollered.
Yeah. We're not destined.
Apparently not. New year, I make, yes.
Any other, uh, questions? Okay, I make a, ask for motion to return?
I second. I make a motion. Or you make the motion?[1788.51]